Are you?
Good, Natasha, thanks for letting us know.
Lee is here also.
Yes, I see that, thank you. Good evening and welcome. My name is Adam Block, I'm Chair of the Needham Planning Board and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner tonight, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. I will now confirm attendance of Planning Board members and staff. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Artie Crocker.
You're here.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Natasha Spada.
Present.
I'm obviously present. I have heard from Paul that he will be here imminently. So we'll mark him as present when he arrives. For our town department staff or planning staff, Lee Newman. Lee, can you hear us?
I don't think we can hear us.
I don't think she can hear you.
Oh.
Natasha, you're on there twice.
I know, I'm twice. I've never been a twin before.
That's pretty funny.
So, are you able to text her, Alex? Okay. And then, just by virtue of you answering that question, I'm going to mark you as present.
Present.
While we sort through our connectivity with Lee, we know that she's present on video when we're working to get her audio set up. For those participating in this meeting, please be aware that anything you state and share will be a matter of public record and others may be able to see and hear you. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website at needhamma.gov unless otherwise noted. The first item on our agenda tonight is our decision to major project site plan special permit number, is our amendment to major project site plan special permit number ninety-five dash ninety-four, pardon me, dash five, with respect to Coca-Cola Beverages Northeast Inc. as petitioner for the property located at nine B Street. On this matter, I note that the Design Review Board approved the petitioner's revised landscape plans per their memo dated November 7th. I also note a letter from the Petitioners Council dated January two, two thousand and twenty-three, confirming that a reclass, bless you, confirming that a reclassification of various parts of the building was undertaken that related to required parking and further confirming that five hundred and thirty-four parking spaces will be provided with a request for a waiver of up to eleven, for eleven parking spaces. We also have an email from our Building Commissioner, Dave Roach, acknowledging that the changes were related to the parking came under his direction. And we have a subsequent email, I think, from him today, Lee, dated today, acknowledging the changes in the parking and accepting the changes. So unless anyone has, I'm going to first turn to Alex. Lee, are you able to hear us?
She seems to be able to hear us, but she can't.
Alex, we can't, Lee, we can't hear you.
Lee, do you want to try calling?
Also, Adam, I just wanted to let you know that Evans has his hand up.
Okay.
I'm trying to get Lee the contact info to call in.
We're going to see what happens. And I'm going to mark in the meantime that Paul Alpert is present. As Paul has just joined us. Thank you very much.
Good to be here.
I see that Lee is still connecting to audio. Lee, can you hear us now?
We can't hear you.
I wonder if, should I ever call my phone and then?
Well, there is a number to call in.
Oh, perfect. Do you want to text it to her? Lee, I don't know if you can hear us, I think you can. Alex is going to text you the Zoom number to call into and then we should be able to get your audio through that. And the mute function is, I think, was it star nine or star six? Evans, I see that your hand is up, we'll come to you in a moment. We just want to sort through some technical issues.
Would you like others to wear a mask? I have one with me. Would you like others to wear?
No, no, no.
How'd you start? How'd you end the year and start of the new year?
You mean?
That was the end of twenty-two and start of twenty-three.
I was working through.
Yeah.
Just in the last two days, I was able to get out to a friend's place. Or our mics are still live and we're still live in this meeting, so.
That's true.
That's right. That's right, it's still a meeting. Let's have a.
That's right, it's still a meeting.
Lee, are you able to dial in? I see a wave. For those at home, we're just sorting through a technical challenge connecting with our town planner.
Could you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, fine, it's working off my phone at least.
Okay, great. So, I'm going to, just by you mentioning that, I'm going to declare you as present in the meeting. I was about to come to board colleagues, if they had any comments on the revised draft, on the draft of the decision. I saw that Evans had his hand up, so are you able to bring him over as a participant, please? Evans, if you give us a second, we're promoting you to a panelist. You're muted, Evans? No, you're not, good.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to, now I see two of myself.
I'm going to say one thing, Evans, before you start, that this is Attorney Evans Huber, who is counsel to the petitioner for Coca-Cola. Thank you, go ahead, Evans.
Sure, thank you. So, I just wanted to clarify one thing, which is, as a result of the recalculation of the number of parking spaces and the appropriate bylaw characterizations of the use of the building, the building still, the site will have a shortfall, a small shortfall of parking spaces, eleven spaces, which is much better than the previous shortfall that was allowed by special permit. As I explained in my original application, because we are reducing the nonconformity, the requirement for a waiver is not triggered under section five point one, point one, point one. So, while we are short of the number of required spaces, we don't actually need a waiver with respect to that number.
I understand. So, in the decision, I believe that we've accounted for that, right, Lee?
Right, we're not granting him a waiver on the parking.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because Mr. Roach's letter says, "I support the waiver," or words to that effect.
Right. So, so we're not, so you're not seeking a waiver for the eleven parking spaces?
Right, I don't think it's needed under the bylaw.
Okay. And so that's accounted for in our decision. Unless anyone else on the board has any comments or notes on the decision, I would probably take a motion to approve the relief.
Well, my comment on the decision is that we have a letter of January seventeenth, this is a minor technicality. We have a letter dated today from Dave Roach, which is not reflected as an exhibit in the decision, and I think it should be added, either as part of Exhibit Eleven, which is the interdepartmental communications, or added as an Exhibit Fourteen.
So would you like to make a motion that we include the letter received dated today from our Building Commissioner?
Well, I think that when we make a motion to approve amendments, we'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the addition of
The minutes? To approve the minutes?
No, 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 to approve the decision. Did I say minutes?
You said minutes, yeah.
To, when we make the motion to approve the decision,
The decision itself.
It will be with an amendment to include
Very good.
the letter from the Building Commissioner.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the relief?
Yes, be happy to. So let me get to the relief that, okay? So I move that we grant the requested special permit under sections five point one, point five and five point one, point seven of the zoning bylaw to waive strict adherence to the off-street parking requirements of section five point one, point three of the bylaw with respect to subsection N, which deals with bicycle racks. This is for the application by Coca-Cola. Second, I move that we grant requested major project site plan review special permit amendment under section seven point four of the bylaw and section four point two of the major project site plan review special permit number ninety-four dash five dated August nine, nineteen ninety-four, amended May one, nineteen ninety-six, subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in the decision.
Thank you. We have a motion by Paul to approve the request relief. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Artie. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I have discussion on two items of the decision. Item, and these are conditions. Item three twenty-one says, "The petitioner shall seal all abandoned drainage connections and other drainage connections where the developer cannot identify the sources of the discharges." Section three point ten says, almost identical to the language I just quoted. Section three ten says, "The petitioner shall seal all abandoned drainage connections and other drainage connections where the petitioner cannot identify the sources of the drainage." Now, section three ten goes on to say, "Ceiling of abandoned drainage facilities and abandonment of all utilities shall be carried out as per town requirements." Section three point twenty-one goes on to say, "The petitioner shall secure from the Needham Department of Public Works a street opening permit if applicable." I question whether the first sentence of three point two one, which is identical to the first sentence of three point ten, other than the using the word "the developer" rather than "the petitioner" in the second line, whether that second reference to the same thing in three point two. Why don't you be deleted?
Jean is correct, the first sentence of three two one should be deleted, that was a mistake.
Okay, so.
The first sentence, or should we, given how redundant it is, should we actually just strike one of them?
No, because the second still makes sense.
When I was writing this, I must have, I made a mistake. So, three two one should just start with the street opening permit and three ten should stand another zone.
Then you have to renumber everything.
Okay, then, another condition is in three point two four. And it says, "No portion of the proposed amendments shall be occupied or utilized until the following conditions are met." Is there a word or phrase missing there? No portion of the proposed amendments shall be occupied.
No portion of the, well, I think of the proposed building maybe to which this amendment applies.
Say it again, Lee.
No portion of the proposed, well, this was really only designed to capture the portion of the building that the occupancy on the portion of the building that's being enlarged. So, no portion of the proposed building covered under this amendment shall be occupied.
No portion of the building being renovated, does that make sense?
That's wrong.
Evans?
About no portion of the new construction, because the building being renovated refers to the whole building.
Okay, no portion of the new construction?
It's, the old building will be torn down, is that not correct?
Or not occupying that while being renovated.
Oh, of course, I'm getting confused, it was something else, I'm sorry.
All the work is being done internally.
Yeah, I understand that, but there's an addition going on. So we're talking about?
Is there an addition, Evans? I don't think there's an addition.
There's an addition going on.
There is, there is some new construction. The overall footprint is being reduced. There's a portion of the building that is, that's currently used as office, which is being demolished. That office use is sort of being merged into the large building in the other side of the building. There's a portion of the building that's being demolished and some new construction there.
Okay, I think no portion of the new construction.
That's five.
And leave the proposed work in, word in, no portion of the proposed new construction shall be occupied.
So Jean, these comments, I think, relate to the amendment, relate to a motion to approve the decision itself.
Which is not on the floor yet.
Yes, we're not quite there. Right now, we just have a motion on the floor to approve the relief.
But I think we can refer to these amendments when we get there.
Yes, that's right.
It was premature in these moments, I thought it was.
It's okay. But do you have any, do you, at this point, any?
Those are the two on that one.
Okay. So does anyone else have any comments and discussion of this motion that we have on approval of the relief? Seeing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker? Jean McKnight? Natasha Spada?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Now, we've received a number of comments to amend the decision from Jean.
So, I move that we approve the decision with the addition to the exhibits that I had raised before and with the two amendments to sections three point two one and section three point two four, which were discussed.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other comments or suggestions on the decision itself? Does anyone else have any other comments on the board?
Was there something about three point one?
Three point two one, three point two one.
I thought there was some mention, Jean, you mentioned about three point one.
You took out the first sentence of three point two one.
What's that?
You took out the first sentence of three point two one because it's redundant to the first sentence of three point ten.
Three point one, okay, so there's no change there, got it.
So, with that, I have a motion to approve the decision as amended presently. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
A second by Artie Crocker, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Natasha Spada?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, the decision has been approved. Thank you very much, thank you, Evans. This item is disposed of. Now we have the decision on this second item on our agenda relating to major project site plan special permit number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero four from BTE Development LLC as petitioner in respect of the properties located at forty and fifty Central Avenue to demolish the existing buildings and to redevelop the property as mixed use with commercial units on the first floor and fifteen units of residential on the second and third floors. Do my colleagues have any comments or questions about that decision? Jean, do you have any comments on?
Just have one comment. Having read the memo from the police chief who expressed some concern about the adequacy of the parking, he didn't express a strong opposition, but just some concern. I went out there and took some photos of the crosswalks. And the reason I was focused on the crosswalks of Central is that if you go across Central and uphill on Rosemary, there is a possibility of parking on that side, on that part of Rosemary.
You mean reservoir?
Oh, I meant, excuse me. I am a little out of it tonight, I must admit. Reservoir. And so while I was just looking at the adequacy of the crosswalks, you know, they're, they've got a different type of surface, they've got some kind of brick to delineate them from the street and then they have white lines next to the brick. The preference these days is to have solid white, that's much more visible in crosswalks. So I thought if there was any thought that as a result of this development, there would be more cars wanting to park in the area that might park uphill on reservoir. If there should be a concern for the adequacy of the crosswalks. Because our DPW director is out on family business, he's been hard to reach about that and I don't know if Lee has been able to reach our Police Commissioner on that subject or whether it's important enough to pursue as an issue.
Lee, we cannot hear you.
The person that is out is the town engineer, so I have not been able to speak with him and I have not connected with the police chief either. I've tried to correspond with him by email and phone, I have not connected with him.
So, there are crosswalks, it's not as if they don't exist. The town could always at any time improve the crosswalks if it thought it needed improvement. So I don't know if we've done enough investigation.
I remember we talked about it, because I, before, that we had a question about the sidewalks and where they were.
Well, my question is, and I, I think this is a valid point, but is this something that the town would take care of or something that the developer would take care of? Because if it's something the town would take care of, then it may not be really something that is is a subject that should be put in the decision. It's just something that we should pursue.
Who was the attorney for this, George Jenta?
Yeah.
Should we bring George over for a moment?
Is he here?
Yeah, yes.
It didn't.
I mean, it's our option, I suppose, if we make it a condition.
I see the possibility of improving the crosswalks going across reservoir continuing parallel to Central. I mean, this area here, not going in the reservoir direction, but the central, keep going west on Central for any type of part of the community that's walking to this area, walking to the stores. I mean, I see that as a possibility, whether it's in the condition or not, but I can see that would benefit from better crosswalks.
George, I'm sure if you can hear our current discussion, the question has come up effectively as a new condition that we would amend our decision tonight requiring the developer to improve the sidewalks, to improve the crosswalks effectively at this site.
So I would be hesitant to agree to take that on for a number of reasons, not the least of which is that that is something that goes through selectmen. And it's different, I think, if we're talking about the crosswalk on the south side of Central going across reservoir, that one will be affected by the six parking spaces that we're proposing to install. So that one will probably have to be, you know, cleaned up or dressed in some way. I don't know, I mean, another part of this is, I'm hesitant to say to accept this as a condition, because I'm not quite sure really what's being asked of the applicant in this case. You know, it's, you know, in, without knowing specifically what is contemplated, are we talking about ripping up the whole crosswalk and then rebuilding it? Are we talking about just repainting it? I'm not, that is, that part's not clear to me.
From my, from my part, I agree that in order for you to create the six public parking spaces that would principally benefit this development, that you will temporarily disrupt that crosswalk. And under ordinary condition, we would expect that the crosswalk would be returned back to the condition prior to construction, right? And that that would be the developer's responsibility. So I, so I think here, and this is just a function of looking on Google Maps in a satellite view, that Jean, the distinction is on this particular, well, in this particular section, there is that red, I think a brick material that's separating out for visibility and we may, I guess, ask you to just continue with that treatment when you restore that section of the crosswalk.
Here's, yes, that's a very good view on the on Google Maps. Here is simply a photo taken, this is the same as this.
Yeah.
So, then we have, for folks at home or just in the room, we're looking at Google Maps, I suppose we could put it up on the screen. There's really, if we do have that requirement, which I think may be reasonable here, given the disturbance caused by the development, should it continue here too? Because you're linking to an island and it should probably just continue on here, it's a smaller section.
It should continue to the other side of the island, yeah, whatever's going on should.
So.
Something about the developer, in, that talks about the developer putting in a separate second parking spaces and being responsible for the improvement of the sidewalk, of the of the crosswalk that is disturbed by the development, maybe only go that far.
So, Lee, I, do you have any comments on this? Lee, we can't hear you. Thanks, Alex.
Yeah, is this helpful to you? I don't, I don't have any comments on this, I was unable to, you know, the town engineer was away, so I was really unable to have him make a recommendation in terms of what, if any, improvements well, he would recommend. And in his original submittals to the board, he did not recommend any improvements at this particular intersection, so I don't have anything to add. Certainly the street opening permit that they're looking for, for the construction of those six parking spaces, which is done through DPW, any disturbance at this crosswalk that there's made will have to be repaired, as Adam had indicated. But in terms of upgrades at this particular location, the town engineer did not recommend it in his first review of the site plan and I was unable to connect with him on, on Jean's question.
And do we have an idea when he'll return to the office?
Yes, I think he's out this week, but I think he'll be back next week.
So one possibility is either to make the requirement now or wait until we next meet. Or, you know, and in the interim, have any further discussion with the town engineer if required. There is a member of the public who had a comment, if you'd like to address us or the topic, I'd ask you to come to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Heller. Ten ninety-two Central Ave, I don't, I drive by down that street all the time.
Sure.
I was just going to suggest that, you know, before putting something, that you do I was just going to suggest that, you know, before putting something, that you do consult with DPW. I know, because, one, I mean, they have to comply with regulations, and I think that's a state road, you know, Central Ave, right, as well. And in regards to visibility, I know, having spoken to Rick Merson years ago, you know, the, the brick crosswalk, you know, over on West Street, as you approach, you know, the tracks, you know, he talked about that they do that because, to make it more visible, to make it safer. So to eliminate the brick, because you think white's more visible, I think that they went out of, they went out of their way to go and make those crosswalks more visible by, by brick.
We're not suggesting to, to remove the brick.
Okay.
What we're questioning here is whether to require.
I thought Jeanie was talking about more vis, white paint was more visible than the brick. And, and, and that was her first initiation for the discussion.
That was, I didn't expressly say it, but it was kind of in the, in the back of my mind.
Yeah, I thought that was erroneous in regards to how, how DPW views crosswalks, okay?
That's right.
I wanted to point that out, and I think that you have to get some advice from, from them in regards to what Jeanie's proposing.
Thank you very much. So I.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is this crosswalk actually going to be disturbed by putting in those six parking places?
Yes, because they're going to start pretty much here, and they had to cut into the road.
So that, is this, is this edge backing up? Is this whole corner backing up then?
I think that there is, you're, you're kind of, George, I'm putting you on the spot here, but if I recall, you're, you are taking some space on the sidewalk, correct? In order to create the parking space?
That is correct. The, basically where the side of reservoir, on the south, on the south side of reservoir, south to Central, that will, that, that will be changed a bit, because yes, we're going to be carving out kind of the, the six spaces along there.
And that curved section at the intersection will also be disturbed as a result of construction, correct?
Right, right. And, and certainly, I mean, as, as a, I think as Lee mentioned, as a part of the street opening permit, any disturbance has to be, you know, restored, repaired, replaced back to its prior condition. So, so that, that's, you know, that would be fine as a, as a requirement. I, I think, and having had a little communication with my client in the meantime here, as we've been discussing this, I think we would push back on upgrading the crosswalk that goes across reservoir, which is currently asphalt. I think we, we would not want to see that, we would not want to see a condition to upgrade that as brick for a number of reasons, not the least of which is that may require redoing a substantial part of the intersection, because typically if you cut the asphalt, you then have to go, you know, 15 feet on either side. So now we're talking about maybe redoing the asphalt and the whole.
So if that's, if that's where we're at, then I think what I would recommend is we hold, suspend our vote tonight and speak to either DPW or a town engineer. And I, I'm not clear on that 15 feet on either side of the sidewalk. I, my, I had always been concerned that there may not be sufficient parking. I would not regard this location or this development as commuter friendly. I recognize that there is, that there is a bus on Central Avenue, but the times of it are not frequent. And it's not like there is another train line or something that's right there. And that there may be, depending on the number of commercial spaces in particular, you know, a fairly good demand for, for parking. And in an effort to promote public safety, accessing this, you know, this particular improvement and development, I think it would behoove the developer that when they're already going to rip it, you know, rip up that intersection between the demolition and new construction, that it, that it now is an opportunity to bring it up and in line with the brick that already exists into Central Avenue and on the north side of Central Avenue, crossing reservoir. So that's my own particular opinion. Unless my colleagues on the board feel otherwise, I would just as soon not take a vote tonight to give Lee instead an opportunity to speak with town staff on how to handle that issue.
Well, I think, I think it is worth, I mean, I don't think we're in a position that we can say to Lee, put this condition in right now, because I, I don't think we have the.
That's fine.
Advice of our staff about what exactly our staff would want.
Okay.
But given that the, these parking spaces are being created in the public way to accommodate this development, I think it's, it is a reasonable thing to ask the developer to make some improvements to the crosswalk that's right there at those spaces. And the only question is what, what exactly would the town engineer and the DPW want?
So we'll have time to look at that, George. Does that make sense?
Well, I have to, you know, it certainly is logical and makes sense from that perspective. But I know my client is anxious to try and wrap this up so he can move on. As a, as a side note, in case the board was not aware, since this, you know, since we had the first hearing, my client has now actually acquired the property. And so he now owns it, and the clock is ticking, so to speak, so.
George, I'm going to give you two options. I'm going to cut right to it. Option one is we decide right now and we include, and we include a condition. Option two, and we'll draft it right now. Option two is give us two weeks, and then we'll come, what's it?
It's actually three weeks till our next meeting, I suppose.
So give us three weeks, and, and then we'll have a further, we may have a further revision. The choice is yours.
And, and.
Door number one or door number two? Yes.
With the condition above the crosswalk, include only the crosswalk that is along Central on the same side of the street that's right at the end of the seven parking spaces.
Alex, I'm going to ask you, please pull that back up, so.
Yeah.
I can see it going, I can see it going to the island, then continuing on the other side of the island.
On both.
Yeah, just, just.
The island and the other side of the island. But we're not, we're not going to put in a condition about improving the crosswalk across.
Do you?
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
So I just wanted to make that clear, that we're limiting it to the cross right, right next to where the work is being done.
So.
Bottomless, bottomless.
There you go.
Different, aren't different?
Yes, so if you zoom in, so to be clear, what I think we're suggesting, I don't know if you can see this, if you can see me, George.
I'm going to.
Alex is.
I'll follow you.
Great, so, so we're going to, we're going to make a condition now, or in the next three weeks, think of perhaps an alternative. However, while you're doing, to, after construction, or as you're completing construction, to get your occupancy permit for either the residential or the, or the commercial units, to return this to a brick condition that will also be, one second, I'll read. That will be, that will be striped, you know, new paint, and then we'll also continue it further on Central Avenue past the island, probably about the same length, I don't know, it might be a total of 25 or 30 feet plus another 25 feet or so of that red brick that would be newly striped.
Mr. Chair, do you mean that will have brick or just re-stripe it?
I'm saying this will have brick, the asphalt will be ripped up, and then we have brick. And then, as you see here already, it's.
No, no, I understand that. I wasn't sure where we're heading with it.
So it would be, it would be new stripe, newly striped, and it would have red brick on both sides.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Whether she was concerned about the crosswalks, the two crosswalks, the one that goes across Central Avenue and the one that's on, on the north side of Central Avenue that crosses, crosses reservoir, did you have a concern about?
Only concern as to whether they're adequate to say that the crosswalks are adequate so that no worry about parking, cars can park across the street.
Because you think that cars may park on the other side of Central Avenue, in which case they would be crossing along those two crosswalks.
Yes.
I would, off the top of my head, I would guess that all that would need to be done would, would be repainting the white stripes.
Mm-hmm, probably, yeah.
Probably for those.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's a question of what does DPW.
Yeah. And as, as far as the crosswalk that runs along Central Avenue, that one, would we say expressly that it should be bricked or that it should be renovated in accordance with the recommendations of the town engineer and the Department of Public Works?
I suppose the latter is probably better, except that there's already the red brick there.
There is?
Well, there's red brick right here.
The red brick on the other.
Not directly on that side of the.
On the other, just to keep.
You have the red brick.
Keep a look.
That's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So to keep it consistent, and so it stands out, which is why that brick was perhaps installed, maybe as a beautification element, I don't know.
I also have a question for Mr. Jenta. When I grew up in this area, I, I saw a woman and a child waiting, presumably for the bus. And I think they were waiting not in front of Pinellas, but just, just down, down a little.
Just rest.
Down there a little. Was that, is that right? Is that where people wait for the bus? Do you know?
That may be a, so it's one of two things. That may either be another bus stop, it might just be a, a bus stop that's, you know, close proximity, because there is a designated bus stop in, in front of Pinellas. I don't know, you know, I didn't take a look to see where the next bus stop is. I do know that the bus stops quite frequently along there, but I'm not sure if it's, if there's a, you know, where the next designated bus stop is. It also depends, were they on the, on the north side or the south side of Central?
It was standing on the south side of Central, but I don't remember exactly where. But I was just wondering to what extent people walk along Central to get to those bus stops, and that the crosswalks help them. But you're saying that there's a stop right in front of Pinellas. So, you know, I would just say, put an obligation to improve the, the crosswalks, that crosswalk, the one on the, I guess, south side of.
Central.
Central, and to the specifications required by the, the town engineer and the Department of Public Works.
So we can, so we can install that condition right now, or door number two is revisit this in three weeks.
Door, door number one for a dollar, please.
All right, George. Door number one for a dollar. So first, I'm going to take a, I, I'm going to take a motion, unless there's any further discussion, on the requested relief for, for this decision.
Before we get there, Mr. Chair, I would like to ask Mr. Jenta, I'm, I'm channeling, I'm channeling Marty Jacobs. George, have you, have you read this decision, and are you all, you all set with it?
I have read the decision, and yes, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So separate from the decision, can I have a motion on the relief?
It's a long.
It's a long one. It's a long one.
Want me to summarize it?
No, because we need to vote it. So, because it says the board voted, and this is what we're voting. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the requested major project site plan review special permit under section 7.4 of the Needham zoning bylaw. This is as requested on the application for 40 and 50 Central Avenue. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 3.2.3.2G of the bylaw for retail sales of ice cream, frozen yogurt, and similar products for consumption on or off premises in a space less than 2,000 square feet for Pinellas Market. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 3.2.3.2H of the bylaw for a takeout food counter as an accessory to a food retail or other non-consumptive retail establishment, also for Pinellas Market. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 3.2.3.2J of the bylaw for more than one non-residential use on a lot where such uses are not detrimental to each other and are in compliance with all other requirements of the bylaw. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 3.2.3.2Q of the bylaw for apartment or multifamily dwelling use above the first floor, where the first floor is used for non-residential use allowed in section 3.2.3.1 or section 3.2.3.2. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 4.4.12A of the bylaw to increase the maximum floor area ratio to 0.7 and the building height to three stories and 40 feet. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 4.4.12B of the bylaw to reduce the minimum size setback adjoining a residential district to 20 feet. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 5.1.1.5 to waive strict adherence to the off-street parking requirements of section 5.1.2 of the bylaw and the parking design requirements of section 5.1.3 of the zoning bylaw. And I move that we grant the requested waiver of strict compliance with the following requirements of section 7.4.4 of the bylaw as necessary. One, the requirement of subparagraph B concerning the location of structures within 100 feet of the property line. And two, the requirement of subparagraph D concerning cross and longitudinal views of the proposed structures in relation to proposed site layout, together with an elevation line to show the relationship to the center of the street. All is modified by this decision and all subject to and with the benefit of the planned modifications, conditions, and limitations set forth in the decision. And I note, separate from that motion for the record, that there are extensive planned modifications.
Yes.
That are set forth in this decision.
That was probably your best motion yet, Paul.
Thank you. I try to improve each time.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, a second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion on the motion? During that, I come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Gene McKnight?
Aye.
Natasha Spada?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have approved the requested relief. May I please have a motion to approve our so now amended decision dated January 20, January 17, 2023?
So I move that we approve the decision as presented. I believe there's only the one amendment.
Yes.
That we've discussed with regard to the crosswalks.
Yes, that Gene.
Although I want to make sure it's the two crosswalks, to the island and the other side of the island.
Yes.
Right. The crosswalk on the south side of Central Avenue that crosses reservoir.
And crosses the, the island.
Crosses the island.
So we're, so we're clear. Lee, are you clear on that? Lee, you're muted.
Would someone please repeat to me what the condition is?
The condition is, Gene? The condition is.
Is that the, the petitioner is responsible for improving the crosswalk on the southern side of Central Avenue from the premises to the island and from the island to the sidewalk. To the specifications of the town engineer and the town Department of Public Works.
Fine, I, I have it now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And before we take the. And before we take the vote on the decision, Lee, should I mention that there were six typos that were corrected?
Yes, that's fine.
Yep.
And she has those.
She has those, yeah.
So with that, we have a motion by Paul Alpert, a second by?
Second.
We have a second by Jean McKnight. Any discussion? During that, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker? Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Natasha Spada?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have unanimously approved the decision. I declare this item dispensed with. Thank you all very much. George, thanks for playing, thanks for playing door number one, door number two tonight.
Thank you, always an enjoyable game.
This brings us to the third item on our agenda, which is a review and further discussion of proposed zoning articles for the May 2023 annual town meeting. And at present, we have two items that we're looking to reform. One is liberalizing our ADUs, which is section, one of the sections 3.15, I believe, in our zoning by law. And secondly, to allow three-car garages by right in the SRB district. We received last night a request from resident Maggie Abruzi, who's with us tonight in person, to amend the parking at section 5.1.2 of the zoning by law in respect of the parking table. I'd like to take up the first two items that we've already been working on and see if we can resolve those. So I guess I'd like to start with, what's the easiest one? The three-car garage or ADUs? Anyone have a preference? All same.
Probably the three-car garages are the easiest one, do you think, Lee?
Yes, I agree with that.
Then Alex, can you promote John Schneider, please? Maggie, thanks for being with us tonight, and we'll come to you on work with these.
What are we promoting, Mr.?
We're going to, uh?
What rank is he now? What rank are we promoting him to?
He was attendee, we're promoting him to?
Participant.
Participant.
He should be honored.
So here we're dealing with, if people are following along at home, in our zoning by law, 6.1.2.
Lee, do you want to guide us through this?
Sure, glad to. I think, I think first of all, I think we should just talk about what the intent was relative to this article, what we were trying to accomplish. And essentially, right currently, in order to construct the third garage bay, basically in the single residence B district or the general residence district, requires a special permit through the ZVA. And there's a feeling, I think, that, that is, is really no longer, that's really not required. That there are probably some of those additions that we can speak to allow as of right, as opposed to by special permit. And so the zoning basically was designed to call out those circumstances where in those districts, one would be able to add that third car, you know, bay as of right. And then if you didn't fit within those parameters, you would go, you would still go to the ZVA for a special permit. So the exceptions that we made in the draft that Jean and I had worked on, although John Schneider, I think, had suggested some additional modifications to that. Just to begin with, the draft that Jean and I worked on, the first exception was that, under paragraph A, if the garage door was located on the facade of a dwelling, which facade faced us, if, if the garage was basically, if the door was located on a side lot line or a rear lot line, then you would be able to put that third car garage in that location. The next, I think, exception that was made was if it, if, if it faces, if it, if the garage was, door was on the side of a dwelling, which faced the front lot line, it would, it would be permitted, provided that garage was set back at least five feet from the front face of the primary building. And then the third exception was if the garage was basically located in an accessory structure. And in this, in the draft that, that Jean and I had worked on, we called out that accessory dwelling being located behind the back wall of the principal structure. So that was the, I think, proposal that is, was worked on by Jean and I, reflective of the conversation that the board had at the last meeting. John maybe wants to speak to the changes that he had suggested beyond that.
So for the record, I'll mention for those at home and here that John Schneider is the chair of the Needham's Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you for being with us tonight, John.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, so my preference would be to simply, simply allow three garages of right. I don't share the view of some that having garages in the front is offensive. I think that's a very popular style that's liked by people. It's even more popular in other parts of the country, in Florida and Arizona where I am. We've allowed three-car garages of right in the single residence A for years, and it hasn't resulted in some blight on the town of people making bad designs. And so my preference would be to keep this simple and not complicate our bylaw by trying to accomplish some design objective that some people will like and some won't like. And if I were making the decision, I would just allow three-car garages of right wherever the homeowner wants to put them, like we have in single residence A. Having said all of that, if you adopt the proposal as drafted, you will have accomplished 70% of what I requested. I think we'll get rid of 70% of the hearings. But I think it would be better to just keep it simple and let the homeowner decide.
From my own opinion, I tend to agree with that view. And I also, I don't think that we have, you know, a need to further set back the third car garage, you know, beyond. And I think that we do dive into a little bit of architectural censorship. So I, I do wonder about that, but, Lee? Yes, we have a question from the floor. For, you know, for the record, you'll have to come up. Thanks, Jeff. Your name and address.
Does that, the stipulation where you don't have, you have to have a jog in the wall, a wall for every 30, 32 feet? You can't have a straight wall.
Right.
Doesn't that come into play with that the garage doors would qualify as a wall? And you have to have a little two-foot jog for, at every 32 feet? Is that not correct?
So that would be true. Is that on a side?
That's, that's a side yard setback standard, not a front yard setback standard. The current front yard setback standard is, is that the garage has to be set back, I think, an additional five feet from the front facade of the house under new construction. But the rule that Jeff is talking about was really a side yard setback standard, which basically said that after 32 linear feet of wall along the sideline of the, of the house, that you had to have a jog in after that point.
So I, I prefer John's option of keeping it simple. I don't think that it's, you know, it's, I, I think it's a very fine line when we're dealing with censorship of any kind, including architectural censorship. It's true that there is some bad design. But it's also true, having, you know, having walked this weekend with, with my son and our dog, and we've seen a number of these, that there have been very fine garages that are designed well on the front plane of the house, even when they extend in front of the, of the front door, of the front plane. So I would prefer to simplify this.
Well, I mean, except for Mr. Chair, it was very specific, just a few years ago, three, four, five years ago, whenever it was, that the garage, in the new construction, when the new garage was being built, had to be set back from the front of the house. Because it was very, it was very much so that it was not deemed attractive when it was in the front of the house. That was one of the reasons for the setback of the garage behind the front surface of the, of the house. I mean, in all our dealings, we deal with, you know, visuals all the time.
We are not the arbiter of taste.
We, we deal with visuals all the time.
Want me to be the arbiter of taste?
No, I'm not talking with arbiter of taste. I'm talking about, we, we changed the bylaws to have a setback there. We changed the bylaws to have a setback when the wall's going 30 feet, jog it back. We changed the bylaws with the overhang, where the, now, now the, the distance from the property line is now to the foundation, not to the overhang. And we changed that to some degree. In my, my, from my view at this point, it is much more attractive. It was done for, I suppose the builder can make the house bigger now, but it was done because it much, it gives a much more attractive house when you have larger overhangs. Is now the builder doesn't have to back the overhang down in size to account for the property line. So we deal with these types of issues all the time. So in a new house, the garage is set back five feet. If someone wants to add, add a third car garage, it could be set back, it needs to be set back five feet from the front of the house. If, I suppose if the existing garage is, we can, we can contemplate if the existing garage is already set back five feet, I suppose we can contemplate not allowing, not requiring an additional five feet of that. We could contemplate that. But, but from my viewpoint, that's the most we should contemplate, is if it already exists five feet back, then it can, then the new one can stay on that line. If it, if it's not five feet back, it has to be five. If the existing is not five feet back, the additional one has to be five feet back.
And if I'm wrong, I agree with, I agree with that point of view. And I think, Paul, you said at our last meeting that many architects and working with property owners and knowing what the rules are, will design it five feet back to comply with this in order to avoid a special permit.
I did say that.
Yeah. And I think that, I think that may be true. And I'm thinking back to my time of my, of service on the large house study committee and the concern that we had about large, flat walls without any, without any ins and outs and that these were taking away from the, from the look of the neighborhood. And we made some, you know, minor changes really, but ones that we thought would have an effect. And, and that's, this is going in that direction in just this one way. If they want a third car garage and they want it to be flat with the front of the house, they have to get a special permit. Otherwise, go right ahead and do it. Go to the building inspector and get your building permit.
You need a special, or a special permit?
No, just your building permit. Because you can port, according to these changes, you can port a three-car garage on your property in the B zone without a special permit.
As long as it's set back.
As long as it's set back five feet from the front lot line or the entrances from the side. You see many houses where they put the, the garage is on the side and the entrance is on the side.
I'd like to make a comment about the issue about its being on the side where you have a corner lot.
Yes.
Because I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure that we have adequate language here because we say it's okay if the garage space door faces a side street or way. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that that does the trick where, where our, our building commissioner's interpretation of a corner lot is that we have two front, we have two front
That's right.
streets for, for setback purposes. I think that we need to spill more ink to make it clear that you can have the garage as of right, without a special permit, if it's on, if it's a corner lot, if it's on the street that the front of the house is not facing. And I don't know how exactly to word that, but I think that's our intention here. So that we're just defining, for purposes of section 6.1.2, you know, just limiting it to this, is that we only have one front street, which is where the front door is.
And would you, would you make a point at all of the, the address of the house? Would you say something, and where the house has its address?
John, do you have any feeling one way or the other on this issue?
Some houses, some houses have an address that's not what we would look at and say is the front.
I don't think, I don't think using the address.
Yeah, the house on the corner of Park Ave, Parker Road, excuse me, Parker Road and Green Dale Ave has changed their address to Parker Ave, Parker Road.
Yeah.
But the house is facing Green Dale because they've?
It's, it's a better address.
It raises the value, exactly what it was.
The chair recognizes Natasha.
I put that out seriously as a question. I really didn't know what the answer was, and now I know.
Maybe it makes sense to go with, with the front doors.
Natasha?
I agree with Artie and Jean. I mean, we, we clearly don't have a design review process for houses, and I understand that. There's a reason why we have setbacks. There's a reason why we have, like, the building. You're doing it on the side of the building, but you, we don't want to do it in the front of the building. So if the garage is designed well, they'll be giving a special, they'll be given the special permit. I think it'll happen. But I think we've reduced the amount of special permits by some of the other decisions that we made. So I feel comfortable leaving the five foot back for the third, you know, for the third garage so that it can be reviewed as a special permit.
I mean, but it's, it's, you know, it's by right unless and special permit, if they want to do it less than five, set it back less than five feet?
Right.
Correct.
That's what we currently have, have drafted.
So five feet from the existing garage plane? Is that what we're talking about? Or this is five feet from the door? I think it's from the house. I think it's five feet from the garage plane, existing garage plane, Natasha?
I think so. But I, but I agree with Paul. I think what happens when you have a house that has two, two faces on two streets, right?
How are you, you had a thought about that? Do you want to shed a little light on the, on a corner lot scenario?
You asking me?
Yes.
I, I think, I think you go with the front door. I don't think you can go with the dress.
Front door.
Yeah.
The, the, for purposes of this, the front of the house will be where the front door is.
The front door is, yeah.
Okay.
And John had a point with regard to subsection C on, where it says the additional garage space should be located in accessory building where the accessory building is separate from and located to the back wall of the?
That's what you had.
That's what I had.
Right.
And, and he has got a suggestion, and I think, I think it's, I think it's a good one. I, I would recommend we go along with it. Where he says, the additional garage space should be, this is a possibility. You don't need a special permit for this. If the additional garage space is located in accessory building where the accessory building is separate from and set back at least five feet from the front wall of the principal structure. So whether it's attached to the principal structure, as we were discussing before. So whether it's attached to the principal structure, as we were discussing before, or separate from, he says, if it's, as long as it's set back five feet, it doesn't need to be behind.
Right.
So everybody go along with that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And I, I had one other comment, which is you've added a condition to the special permit, that we need to make a finding that the garage is not the predominant feature. I, I find that pretty vague and subjective, and I would prefer that it's out.
Oh, yeah.
If, if, if you want to keep it in, we'll do our best.
I agree to remove it.
Yeah.
This is subsection D. It will, subsection D says, "Will not result in the garage door, doors being the predominant feature when the dwelling is viewed from the street away in which the door," and that's, this is part of the special permit process. If it's something that goes to the special permit process, this is one of the criteria of the, of the special permit.
Yeah, but John, we'd like to take that out.
Yeah.
I'm okay with taking it out.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm okay.
And Natasha was too.
She's shaking her head in agreement. So we'll remove.
There were some clarifications in the paragraph.
There were some language things, but I think Lee probably just needs to redraft.
Yeah.
Circulate.
Yeah, we're making those changes, it's just a matter of drafting, right?
Right.
Okay, so I, I think we have resolved the three-car garage. Oscar, you had your hand. Oh, one second, Oscar.
John, John had an email that he had another comment. I don't know whether he still, how he still feels about it, about, oh no, I'm sorry, it has to do with the ADUs.
Yeah, we'll come to that. So before we come to the.
So then I.
Lee, go ahead.
So I guess, just to summarize, so we're all on the same page. I understand that changes we've agreed to is under paragraph A, we're going to define the front of the, of the house as being where the front door is located. We're going to add the language that John has suggested under paragraph C, to allow the accessory structure to be five feet back from the wall, the prin, the front wall of the principal structure. John's clarifying language, I think, that he had in the paragraph that begins upon application, which I think I modified slightly. And then the last is we're going to delete paragraph D, and that frames, I think, the, that's the framework for the article that we'll, we'll move forward with.
Yes.
Yes.
Oscar, you had your hand up, if you would want to address us, want to come in and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. Oscar Wertz, 67 Rybey Hillway. Not to jump in late in this conversation, but I, I think there was a reason why single residence A was three-car limit and single residence B was two-car limit, basically frontage is smaller. The one thing I would ask the board to consider is that, is there, and maybe John also some thoughts on this, whether it's reasonable to say that you create a percentage of front of building that you are not allowed to eclipse if you have a three-car garage? Maybe it's 50%. But what I would not like to see, because I'm, as an architect, I'm not a great fan of three-car garages, when they're really the dominant feature on the house, on the front facing the street. Is it reasonable, John, to say that if you have a lot, and you have your, whatever front that you have, 80 feet or 90 feet, and you're putting in, my, my sense is that this is not necessarily a symptom of these large houses that are getting built as replacements, call them teardowns, call them whatever you want. But the idea that the three-car garage is now a contributing factor to this big house, I would like to think that we could put some caveat that says, "Only if you are not over 50% of the front of the house, would it be allowed to be a three-car garage." Otherwise, you have to turn.
I wouldn't mind that personally. I mean, that, that, that kind of goes to the dominant feature.
Well, that's the point.
That we just struck out.
Except, hold on a second. I, I under, I understand, but what I find interesting, just for a second, if you have a house and a garage space is typically 20 feet, or, no, that's.
Two cars is.
Two cars is 24.
22.
Right, so.
It'd be 24.
Okay, so you got another 12.
Now, they're getting bigger and bigger with nine-foot doors.
But let's say, let's say, forgive me, I'm, I'm not an architect like you and Natasha. So if you have a house that is 12, 12, 24, 36, you could be in a scenario where we're saying this is the dominant feature, because it's the, of the garage, where it's 50% or 51%, but it's not really the dominant feature of the house, because let us not forget that in most, almost all circumstances, where you have that kind of attached garage, you have 900 square feet or more of living space directly above it. So it's really, if anything, it's, it, it's, and then you're going to split the difference, it's like 50% of the front of the first floor? Do you know what I mean? I think.
Well, I think the issue for me is that there's, you got half the house is asphalt. So you're creating the driveway for the three-car garage, which is now over 50% of the house. So to me, it starts to tip the balance of the house being overwhelmingly about the cars, and not necessarily about addressing the street. So it's, to me, just a question, whether we want to go to the math on that, because there are some, there may be some value in at least trying to pump the brakes on how often you're going to get three-car garages. It's just going to be for lots that are basically every, you know, with a minimum of 80-foot frontage, or 85, 90, houses that have corner lots.
If you have a house on an 80-foot lot, and your setbacks are 20 feet, so on either, on the side, so now you're down to 40 feet.
And it's 12 and a half.
What's that? 12 and a.
12 and a half.
12, sorry, 12 and a.
12 and a half for new construction.
Side setbacks, I think, are 14, actually, they're 14.
So 80 minus.
That's 28.
So call it 30. So we've got a 50-foot wide plane, plane of a house.
You get two-car garage at 24.
Yeah, exactly. So that's fif, that's 50%.
So do we, as a board, propose that you could, you would accept that a good three-fifths of that facade could be a three-car garage?
And what's, so what?
If you don't have a limit on the proportion, or a ratio.
And they also do have to conform to the setbacks of, of the lot as well, so, which is a limiting factor.
But you're saying that a three-car garage is probably going to be more than 30 feet long?
It's going to be at least 33 to 36.
Right. So, so if you've got 80 feet of frontage, you have to subtract out 28 feet, you're left with 52 feet.
Yeah.
And if you take out 33 feet of the 52, let's call it 32 feet.
It's a bust.
It leaves you with 20 feet.
Which means you're turning in the corner.
Are you really going to build a house that's only 20 feet wide?
No, well, I don't know, I've seen.
No, that's not, no, that's not what's going on. What, what happens many times, I have, I have housed near mine, on Brookline Street, there's a house where there's a two-car garage, it's, it was a fairly narrow lot, a two-car garage, then the, let's call it quote, "front door," front of the house is 12, 13, 14, 15 feet wide, maybe, or something like that, this was, this is the type of lot. So the house is on top and behind the garage. So the, so the, the front of the, the front of the house is a garage. That's, that's what, that's what it is. So Oscar is talking about, Oscar isn't saying that the house is only 20 feet wide. He's saying that the front of the house that's presented to the street, if we're talking 52 feet, if all of a sudden we have a 30, a 36-wide garage, then we're left with 18 feet of a house visual to the street, and then the, then the rest of it's on top and behind, or something like that. Are people going to build that? Yeah, they'd build that.
You'd be surprised.
They would, they would build that. They would, they would build that.
What's your experience like when you're dealing with these special permits? Are they typically, you know, on a dimensional basis, on an 80 or 90-foot lot, are they typically, they still have to conform to the se, the side setbacks and other dimensional regulations, right?
Well, a, a lot of them are actually on oversized lots, you know, or, or lots that have more than 80, 80-foot frontage. I don't think many people are going to design something where there's a three-car garage and a 10-foot entrance to the house.
Right.
Could we have just the math?
But they could, but they could have an 18-foot.
I don't know.
What's wrong with setting a limit to a, to a proportion of the garage to the house?
I, I think that makes sense.
Could it be?
That makes sense.
Could it?
And I understand, John, what you're saying.
I think it's overregulated.
It's going to be 10 feet, but still.
No, I don't think so.
I, I, I want to hear what Natasha's saying. People were talking over her.
No, I appreciate what, I appreciate what, what John's saying, that, you know, but, but I have seen houses where the garage is predominant when they're very narrow lots, and so I don't think there, it would hurt to, to have a proportion, as, as Oscar mentioned, you know, which is, that's reasonable. We're not trying to design anything for them, but so that the house does not become a garage with a, and the house entrance adjacent to it.
Are you agreeing with Oscar?
I'm agreeing with Oscar.
We're only talking three, three-car garages, we're not talking two-car garages.
Anyone who set different standards on lots that are, what's a non, pre-existing non-conforming lot, Lee? 50 feet, 60 feet in frontage?
Well, it could be anything in, in the B-zone where it doesn't meet the 80-foot frontage, it's under 80 feet in frontage, and it's under 10,000 square feet in area would make the lot non-conforming.
We're only talking three-car garages, so a very narrow lot, I mean.
I understand that, but just, but we're necessary, now we're going to have to set different standards.
Why? Why, why would we have to set different standards? I don't get it.
I'm going to try to explain.
I have a suggestion for dealing with this. Replace the, the subsection D that we just eliminated, that is, "Will not result in the garage door as being the predominant feature," that is a subjective way of looking at it. Instead, for D, simply have the appropriate percentage, will not result in the garage door, doors in the, in the front facade of the house, being more than.
50%?
50% of the length of, of the house.
So are the length of the, the length of the house on the first floor?
On the first floor.
The length of the first floor of the house.
Right. That's right.
I think that kind of makes sense, but not 50%.
That will only come about, if, if, like, if, if they meet the standards that are above in A, B, and C, for by right, if they have it five foot back, they could do it by right. So.
Yeah, 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 I don't think you want the, I don't think you want the provision in D where there's a special permit. I think you want to put, put that provision up under the, of right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay.
I think so, yeah. And Oscar's nodding his head. Oscar's agreeing.
That's even better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I also, but if they don't meet that rule, they could go and get a special permit.
Permit, right.
Because, give them the flexibility to prove that it's fine anyway.
So, Lee, do you understand where we're heading with this?
I think so. I think that I can work with Jean, and hopefully taking this to the next step, that you can review at the next meeting.
John, do you have any further comments on three-car garage?
No, thank, thank you. I think this is progress in relieving the burden on homeowners and relieving the burden on the ZBA. I think, I think, I think this will cut down substantially the number of permits we hear.
That was our goal, so we appreciate your effort to help us get through this. And now, let us.
Mr. Chair, I just took a two-minute break.
Okay, so.
Keep going, but I just, I just needed to.
I understand. Rest of the board want to take a break for? So let's pause here for, John, if you don't mind hanging around with us for five minutes, it's.
Go, go to it, you've been at it a while.
Eight, 21, so eight, 26, we'll re, we'll reconvene.
That was an easy one, huh? It's eight, 26.
John, can you hear me?
Again.
Oh, good. I finally got it to work. I set my machine down and logged back in. Good.
I know, I, I switched to my wife's computer because my video doesn't work on my old computer very well.
I was using my earplugs the other day, and now I'm muted. And then, when I went to log in, the audio wasn't working, even though my earplugs weren't plugged in. Go figure, I don't, I don't get it.
Computers, we need them, but they drive us nuts. So we're in a recess, we're going to talk about ADUs now. Probably an hour. You're warming up, let's do it, I presume. Thank you. You don't want to listen to this?
We're going to do the video now.
Yeah, when they come back. They want to keep this, all this business about the third garage has got to be on the side, it's set back five feet. You know, the majority of them want that, so that's what they're going to do, when I, I said to them, if that's what you want to do, you still improve my situation 70% of. if that's what you want to do, you still improve my situation seventy percent of.
Get back to business. Um, if I may, I'm gonna reconvene.
Uh, Lee and Natasha have to come back.
Oh, we had them. Lee is here.
I'm back and it's working.
Look at that. There you go, Lee. We hear you loud and clear now.
It's called running your computer.
It works like a charm. Um, okay, so for those joining us at home, uh, we're now dealing with, um, an ADU, uh, uh, reform, uh, as it currently stands in our existing bylaw. An effort was made several years ago to create accessory dwelling units, lawful accessory dwelling units in the town, uh, primarily to enable, uh, care to those that may need it. And so, um, uh, uh, you may now, as it stands, up to eight hundred and fifty feet, by special permit only, uh, a, apply to, um, create an accessory dwelling unit. Of course, it would have its own kitchen and so on, and it would be only available for the, uh, the residents of what was the main structure, and they could rent out, or they could, um, have their family or caregiver live in the large, in the large house, and the, uh, other people, uh, that were otherwise living in the la- uh, larger main house can move into the ADU, or more likely, uh, for some that, uh, that the ADU is where the caregiver, uh, or other family member may live. Uh, and now we're talking about, um, allowing accessory dwelling units by right uh, in, in town, um, where they can be rented out. And, uh, on a, currently, we're dealing with a twelve-month lease proposal, uh, with certain limitations. And then, uh, that would be allowed, uh, by right, but if you wanted a separate, uh, structure for an ADU, uh, that it would require a special permit. And part, and this also comes about, I think, I think for serving two community goals. One is to, uh, in an effort to create more housing and hopefully more affordable housing. And then also that would enable our, uh, seniors in town and others that may be on, uh, a small income to be able to drive more, uh, more income to ease the financial burden on, on homeowners. Uh, those I think are the two community goals that we're looking to achieve. Is that right, Lee? Did I accurately?
Yes, I think, I think you covered it.
Categorize that? Thank you. So, do you want to walk us through where we're at today with the current ADU proposal?
Sure. The current proposal, I think, as you, as you mentioned, um, revises the zoning so as to allow, um, uh, ADUs, um, as of right, um, where they're currently permitted, um, by special permit um, to caregivers and, and, and family members. Um, expands it so as to, um, allow it also for, through a lease arrangement. Um, and, um, all that is done under, under the as-of-right umbrella. Um, and then it further allows ADUs by special permit, um, in accessory structures. Um, it's, um, and it, um, allows for the ADU to be transferred to, um, a new, to basically a new property owner without, going through any kind of special permit process, if it's an accessory dwelling or any further process through the building inspector, if it's, if it's an as-of-right unit. So the zoning is currently drafted, um, to provide for changes to the existing language to enable what I've just described to you.
Okay, so, uh, John, do you want to lead us through, uh, your suggested or your comments or suggestions on improving?
Happy to do. I'd be happy to do that. Um, I mean, I want to, I want to start by saying that despite all the hoopla, the current ADU provision has not been well-used. We've, we've allowed everyone that's come before us, they've been non-controversial, with one exception. Uh, and there only been a total of ten in three years. So, in, in my view, I think that the old ADU bylaw was, was much more restrictive than it need be. And my point of view is that not, not only should we uh, al- allow unrelated tenants under a lease, but I have some suggestions of other ways in which I think we ought to liberalize the current ADU provision. Um, and the, and, and the first is that I think in the definition of family, it, it would be appropriate to add grandparents and aunts and uncles. Um, I made that comment when it was drafted before and was told I was too late making the comment. But I think, I think those are very logical family members that would be in an ADU. And I also point out that this affects the definition of caregiver, where a caregiver has to be someone taking care of a family capital F member. And so a caregiver taking care of a grandparent in the house would not qualify under the way we have. So that's, that's my first suggestion. You want me to keep going? You want to talk about?
Yes, please. Uh, yes.
Keep going?
Do you want to go one at a time, though? It might, no, that's complicated.
Yeah, I think, I think one at a time makes sense.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
I agree with John that it certainly doesn't hurt anything to add that, you know, a grandparent or an aunt or an uncle as a, a logical extension of, uh, the definition of family for the purposes of the ADU and for a caregiver. I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone else have a problem with that?
Yeah.
Um, no. Um, so, uh, so it, uh, it would be, as we've got it now drafted in section three fifteen-two under definitions, uh, if, in family, it would say, um, it'll related to the owner as follows: spouse, parent, sibling, child, grandchild, grandparent, aunt or uncle, and then, or a spouse or child of any such resident person.
Right.
Um, and so that we're expanding the definition of family. Okay. I want to mention that I made a, a distinction, um, between the definition of family in this, uh, ADU section because we already have a definition of family in our zoning bylaw. And, um, it's, it's much more broad in, it, it says simply, one or more persons related by blood or marriage. Uh, it goes on to say, and including not more than eight additional persons, of which not more than six may be foster children and et cetera, and not more than five unrelated individuals. So it's much broader than we're talking about here, which is fine. Uh, but you'll see that I use the lowercase family.
Wait, wait, wait.
In some cases here.
Jean.
Yeah.
The definition of family goes on, and this is where I have a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Because you just, because the definition of family in section, what, what is it, one point one? Well, in the definition section.
In the definition section.
Uh, of the bylaw.
One point three, yeah.
There are three subsections, and you just read the first subsection.
Mm-hmm.
And the second subsection is not more than five unrelated individuals. And I've got a problem with having a, a lease and having five unrelated individuals being able to lease.
It's, it's only one bedroom.
Then, then it's easily solved by putting in the subsection one there. Um, so that the lowercase family is one or more persons related by blood or marriage and including not more than eight additional persons. I mean, this foster children's complicated, but we may as well leave it in. It's probably very rare. I mean, we can't change it unless we bring before this town meeting a change to the definition of family. But if we just say section one point three, Brent one, then we're covering that.
Excuse me, Jean. John just said that it's a one-bedroom unit, so just in general, there are only so many people that.
But Natasha, you can have the homeowner living in the, in the ADU and leasing out.
And then they could live.
But the principal residence.
Right, okay. Yes, you're right.
Yeah. So, um, I think that
So.
we may be talking about making two changes there, uh, adding the.
Really, all that you're doing is adding foster children.
Um.
Oh, and not more than four maybe persons other than foster children?
No, it's, it's, it's broader because, well, especially before we added grandparents, aunt or uncle, all we had is one or more persons related by blood or marriage in the definition of family in one point three.
Which could be third cousins twice removed.
Yes. It could be very broad. So, um, so I think we are making a distinction here between what we say exactly can be a family to live in the ADU and the general, the general definition of family. That's all.
I still have a problem with it, Jean, because what we didn't want to happen with the ADU is to create essentially two fa- two-family residential buildings in single-family zones. And by, by expanding that definition, I think we're treading very close to that line where, you know, i- if you've got a street where you've got ten, ten, ten houses and five of them have ADUs, and they're rented out to the definition of family with a lowercase F, you've turned it into a two-family zone.
But ultimately, ultimately, by, even by special permit, which we're looking to do here, allowing, uh, you know, we're, we're allowing two-family housing by special permit anyways.
Because of the.
Because, because, because of the accessory, yeah, in, uh, as an accessory structure. That's one of the principal.
No, because, because we've limited it by the definition of, of family with a capital F, we've really limited it to, to people who are closely related to each other or closely related to the caregiver who can be living in the house, in, in addition, in, in addition to the owner.
So there are two rela- there are two issues, but, and I see a bit of a relation. I admit, I'm confused with with the definition of family and how it's, I have the, in one point whatever three.
Yeah.
Versus the definition of family for the utility of three point one, five point two. We're looking to just change as John has suggested, three point one, five, two, C.
Right.
To add.
And I've got no problem with John's suggestion, adding grandparents, aunts and uncles.
So which part of this do you?
It's not. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is Jean adding being able to have family, not by the definition that we have in three point fifteen point two, C, presently, adding grandparents and aunts and uncles, but also including the definition of family as it exists in one point three.
So strike out that one.
I don't want it. Yeah, I'm, I'm having a problem with including family with a lowercase F, which refers back to section one point three, because that gets into unrelated persons.
So I.
Being, being permitted tenants. Yeah, and I got a problem with that.
So, John, how would you feel about adding in the definition of three point one, five point two, C, aunt, uncle, and grandparent? And in three point one, five, two, wait. C in the amended language, uh, it would read where the word family appears in lowercase.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna take that, I'm gonna take that whole sentence out.
Exactly.
Just get rid of it.
Exactly.
I would just get rid of it and just get rid of any reference to, to family with a lowercase F.
I, I was looking at this separate from this, and it's not. That's my fault.
Well, then what we'd be going back to, and I'm not going to argue about this, I'm just trying to understand it.
Yeah.
What we'd be going back to then is when it comes to regulations for the use of the unit. Um, in the next page, C, occupancy in the unit that is not owner-occupied should be limited to a member or members of the owner's capital F family or a caregiver, and this is what we had previously, that was voted by town meeting, and such caregivers, capital F family.
Right.
And so leave it like that.
Right.
Or a less C and such lesses.
Family with a capital F.
Family with a capital F. That's new because we didn't have lesses before. Um, and provided that occupancy of the principal dwelling unit should be limited to five persons who are not capital F family. And that's, that's.
Where are you? You're, you're in.
I'm in C before.
Three point fifteen point three point one.
Fifteen point three point one, C.
Is not owner-occupied should be limited to a member, members of the owner's family or a caregiver in such category as family or a less C in such lesses, family with a capital F.
Yeah. So we go back to family as the defined term. We're broadening it, but we're still going to use it, and we're gonna get rid of the small case family.
That's what I would like to do.
Okay.
John, you've been patient.
No, that's fine. That, that's fine.
Do you, uh, A, you follow and B, you accept?
Sorry, ask the question again?
Uh, the first question is, you know, you've, are you following our discussion, uh, in our definition?
Yeah, yeah, yes, and I, I think it's fine.
Okay, okay. So Natasha or Artie, are you okay with the change that we've just talked about?
Yeah.
I'm okay with the change.
Okay. So, so Lee, are you clear now on how we shall treat family?
Yes.
Okay. So, John, that was item number one. That was one question you had. Thanks for raising it. Let us move on to your next comment.
My next one is, in, in, in the current ADU provision, the caregiver or family member must occupy the ADU as his primary residence, and I think that's come out in the, in the drafting. But we've kept in that the less C must have this as their primary residence. And I was proposing that we should eliminate that for a number of reasons. First of all, to the extent that we're trying to give seniors and others an opportunity to raise income, that's, that's quite restrictive. I mean, very logical tenants would be, I, I'd say, a student from Babson uh, or might be someone who's working part-time in the Boston area with a family elsewhere. And, and moreover, um, it's kind of a nightmare to police. I mean, is the building inspector really gonna go out and start to look into the lives of the people that are tenants? And all of you who have friends who have houses in Florida know how complicated it is to determine what's someone's primary residence. You know, the time spent and all the other stuff. I, 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 I just, I, I, I don't think we need it. Now, I mean, I understand to the extent we're trying to promote affordable housing, there's an argument that you do that better by saying it has to be their primary residence. But, but I think we, as the chair said at the beginning, we have two purposes here. And the other is to, you know, let people raise some income. And I think that'd be better served if we took out the requirement of primary residence for the less C.
Natasha, do you, what do you think?
I don't have to think about it. I'll little bit, I'm, I'm trying to process it. I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the loopholes can be of that. I, I don't. I understand what you're saying, John. I'm just, let me think about it for a second.
Artie?
Does that mean that the, let's say, one of these, one of the units, the ADU or the primary one, let's just say the ADU one has a family member of the owner of the house, but then the main house, they're renting that out to whoever they're renting it out to? Is that what's going on here? Is that what we're talking? Is that what's going on here? Is that what we're talking about here?
Actually, no, because we don't have any limit on the owner occupant being something as far as the primary residence of the house, the owner occupant, just like any other person with a home in Needham. There's no limit on having Airbnbs. We're not putting that limit on this situation too. We're only trying to control the the less C, the second, the second household living in the building and say they can't have Airbnb. They have to be permanent residents. And so I think we've agreed that we're going to take out the primary residence of the less C because that's very hard to determine. And but.
What section is this language in, Jean?
It's in the definition of less C. It's E subsection E.
Okay.
Yeah.
3.15.2E. Okay.
And in the fourth line, it says during which time such unit shall be the primary residence of the less C. And that's what John thought would be difficult to enforce.
Especially if we have, you know, let's say, a case of snowbirds.
I think he's right. I mean, I think of my own daughter who, for the past year, she and her husband rented a unit in the South End as a petitair. They live in Western New York, but both of them have business in Boston. So they rented it for the whole year to come whenever they want and occupy the unit.
Well, I think what we want to do is.
But they're certainly not their primary residence, you know.
I think what we want to do, and I I think I saw that John had this, was that we want to prohibit subleasing.
Yes.
Yes.
And Airbnbs. I think we need to review.
Well, Airbnbs would kind of be a sublease.
And and further, an Airbnb, that's why I put in the the condition of it being a lease and a lease of 12 and a lease of 12 months because Airbnb by its very nature is a short term rental. So that's so we're prohibiting that either in the larger house or in the ADU anyways.
We're prohibiting the owner from putting it out as putting the ADU out as a short term lease. But.
Or the or the main house too.
We're not doing that now. Should we?
Yes, I think out of the zoning law, Airbnbs are prohibited because it becomes a rooming house. You need a special permit for a rooming house. I don't know exactly what the building inspector's view on that is. I don't know, Lee, you?
I think I think he's been using your tool, John, but I don't know that he feels that it's a strong tool. If it was legally pushed.
We talked about this a couple of years ago and thought that it wasn't such an important issue in Needham that it needed to be addressed as it does need to be addressed in some other communities. So we we left it alone. You can rent out your house. You can put out your house on an Airbnb. Any of us can.
I don't think I don't think that's what the building inspector's view is.
Yeah.
Well, he's been using John's definition, but I think he feels that if there was ever really a challenge to utilization of it, that if he was he would be on weak ground.
Yeah. But I don't think we're trying to address that.
In that dealing with this, it seems to me that it would be worthwhile for the benefit of town meeting members to state the negative here. I mean, me Adam is right when he says there has to be a 12 month lease. That implicitly says it can't be a short term lease or an Airbnb. It might be good to put in here specifically the negative. And this means this means there could be no short term leases or Airbnb.
Yes, doesn't hurt. I would support that.
All right, we can put that in the definition of owner. We can use the same words in the definition of owner as we put in the definition of less C, that they cannot sublease, they cannot put it out at a short term lease. Now, many communities have prohibitions on Airbnbs. Can you leave it up to Lee to find appropriate wording? I think we might have.
You're going to come back on another.
Tonight.
Well, I know I think we need to, Jean, we're going to come back at the next meeting or a meeting, a special meeting that we hold between now and our February meeting and finalize the language based upon what's been discussed tonight.
Okay, but we have the idea.
We have the idea.
We have to address the Airbnb and.
But we are, but I think there is consensus now to remove in paragraph E the middle section of the sentence that says during which time such unit shall be the primary residence of the less C. We're we're striking that provision.
Unless we want to say during which time the the unit shall be occupied only by such less C and the less C's family.
I think we said that. I think that's already in there.
And shall not and the lease shall prohibit.
The prior sentence pretty much says that.
Okay. And I think we want to add and such lease shall prohibit subleasing or assigning.
That's what I had written down, that the lease should prohibit because they have to show us the lease.
That's right.
The lease prohibits short term rentals. Yep.
Shall prohibit short term rentals, subleasing or signing.
Yeah, signing, right.
Don't you want to say it'll prohibit Airbnb or any other kind of?
Yes. And any like technology or platform. Yes.
Okay.
Lee, did you hear that?
Yes, and if I didn't hear it, I have to take.
So I and Jeff, I know your hand is up, but just give me a minute. Just to be clear, though, we are saying that if I build an ADU you know, off my house, that is, let's say, part of the structure, it's not an accessory dwelling, by right, I can, my wife and I can move into the ADU and we can lease out the primary residence.
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Unless it's a long term lease.
Provided it's correct, a long term lease of a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the and the main house could be leased.
Say that again?
Any.
Anybody?
Main house could be anybody.
That's the big change.
So by right, you know, my wife and I could move into the 850 square foot structure or 650, whatever we build, and we could then rent out a 3,500 other square feet of the house.
How is that how is that an ADU? Moving to an ADU? How do you qualify for an ADU as the owner, you know?
Because the owner is living in the ADU apartment.
The ADU is providing support for a caregiver or a family member who needs that kind of support. It's not just moving. It essentially becomes a two family. You're essentially done with zoning period, two families, a single family.
Effectively.
And you said in every place, every place in town is a two is two.
On the main structure of the house, on the on on as it's attached to the house or part of the house, that's true. And the reason is that, one, we're trying to create more housing units. We're hopefully may turn over some affordable housing units. But if you have, if you have a couple, let's say, or an individual that may be, you know, that may be really living on, who is retired and is living on social security as a means to be able to generate additional revenue to ease the financial burden so that they don't have to go sell a house for a million bucks in Needham or 1.5 or whatever the case is and go buy a condo for the same amount of money in Newton or Brookline or Boston, which would just be a lateral move, that they would be able to rent out, let's say, the 3,000 square feet, 2,500 square feet or 4,000 square feet. And they can rent that out for $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000, you know, a month. And by doing that, it eases their financial burden. It's up to them how they determine if they need care, that they remain in the main house and the caregiver lives in the ADU or if it's not a caregiving situation. Sure, Jeff, come on up.
You know, by the way, one one big difference from a two family house is we're imposing a requirement that the owner must live in one of the units, must live on.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is not the case of a two family.
And you can't have four garages up to six garages.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff Heller, Central F. Thank you. You know, I think when you talk about slippery slope, I am all for, you know, being more inclusive in regards to broadening the definitions of all of that as well. And I think the goal for, you know, being inclusive and providing opportunities for caregiving and maintaining in the homes. Okay. But when you, I think this is a terrible slippery slope that you go in here when you start eliminating regulations with with that hope that, yes, you're going to help people, right? But if you've got a McMansion here, you know, a big house and they're going to move in and and, you know, again, when we get into this auxiliary, you know, the separate thing by right, by by special permit, we don't allow, do we allow detached garages? Do we allow detached garages by right? By right? Okay, but I mean, a detached house, a whole nother detached house on the lot, okay? And again, you're trying to think about how do we increase, you know, low income housing and more inclusive housing? The builders are going to take this loophole and they are going to run with it. And you are going to have unintended consequences by eliminating zoning. Zoning is there for protection from allowing and and you need to be careful around the the short term rentals. And I worry about when you say no subletting because, you know, sublease, you know, there shouldn't be a problem with someone being able to sublet. You know, I mean, that's up to the landlord, you know, in the lease, allow whether you allow subletting or not, you know, because and subletting is.
That's one of the affirmative controls.
That's right. That's.
To, you know, which is different than an ordinary rental because and we want to, we want to ensure that the first, that the, it's almost like a generational thing, that a second generation or a third generation, in other words, we've got a 12 month lease and in the second months, the second month, Artie, who's the tenant, leases, does a sublease with me. And in the sixth month, I leave and do, you know, a separate for the remaining term lease with with Paul, who it turns out is going to Airbnb the thing.
Well, you got to make Airbnbs illegal period. You got to have some, and I talked about this one three, four years ago about accountability, okay? And now you're and by now doing it by right, not involving the Board of Appeals, you know, and back then, you wouldn't, you wouldn't even designate who, you know, who was going to accountability. I heard, you know, oh, well, expect the neighbors to hold up, you know, the accountability, right? Or it was too much work for the building inspector to have to expect and keep things. So now we just, oh, because that, we just eliminate the rules and now there's no expectation around accountability because there's no rules to accountability. And I just think that we're going to have some terrible, you know, uncanny consequences of doing away with zoning. People in Needham, you know, I just don't think it's, I think it's scary.
Jeff, to what concern is your talking about the the situations where they're building a separate structure? Is that situation versus your concern where it still looks like a one family house and there's an ADU in there? To what level, to what level are you concerned in different, are you concerned equally? Are you more concerned about the lots where they have the opportunity, they have the lot size to build a separate structure?
You know, right. I mean, where's, you know, where are we talking now within the parameters of, you know, a lot size before we're allowed to build an ADU? And I, right, that's discussions I think you have to get to and define. You have to make it clear, how do we prevent from, you know, short term, you know, Airbnbs? You know, we got to look at the all those little particulars, I think, before we start just eliminating all regulations and then, oh, playing catch up.
So there's.
You know, people can rent rooms by right, right? We don't, before ADU came in, you know, people could could get additional income by renting a room. They just couldn't have a separate kitchen, right? I don't know. I don't know if there was, I don't know how, I'm not informed enough to know if there was a limit to how many rooms you could you could rent without having a kitchen, but.
There's a point where it becomes a rooming house, which has its own separate, I think, regulations.
That's a five unrelated, that's a five.
Cut through this if I may.
Yes.
Jeff, the town is about to go through, you know, I think, a very heartening experience. They're they're in order to achieve a community good, which is greater than any one individual. That's the intent. It's going to require sacrifice and it's going to require risk. I, in particular, for instance, am worried about the unintended consequences of of people becoming landlords and not understanding the risk and the laws around asbestos or asbestos abatement. You know, children dealing with, you know, with lead paint in a house and other obligations, affirmative obligations, that landlords typically, that are that are not professional landlords, don't know and don't know how to deal with those things.
I don't know where that's, I don't know where that's relevant to the ADU and I'm a landlord. Any landlord, any landlord, huh?
No, it's very relevant as it sounds like an older couple, an older person goes into ADU and they want to, they want to lease out their house. Now they're becoming a landlord and that house that they're leasing out to is, let's say, as a family with kids, a whole bucket or a whole can of worms could be opened up because of that possible thing. Again, that person who has.
Be aware, you don't get into a landlord situation without knowing what your legal obligations are. And I'm very familiar with those.
This is different.
So you're, so all of this is going to come up and we're going to have to talk about it at town meeting and it's going to make a lot of us a little uncomfortable at least. It's true. That's a necessary part to get and it's going to be imperfect.
I hope you bring it up to to public hearings before you get to, before you get to town meeting for. And also addressing, what about when you talk about, you know, yearly leases? How does a tenant at will fall into that?
We're not, we're not allowed. That's why it's going to be a written lease.
It has to be a written lease for at least one year.
Except for if it's a family member. If it's a family member, it can be a tenant at will or if it's a caretaker, because they come and go.
You know, I mean, I I write, I've written leases for a year that were tenant at will, meaning that, right, right, that they could break it anytime, you know, that lease, you know, for a month to month. But it was, it was, you know.
We're requiring a different form of lease.
We're requiring it to be one year.
Appreciate your comment. We still got to get to some other items. I know you're sticking around. You'll come back up and visit us in a few minutes.
I worry about this. You know, I hope you talk on the floor, you know, I'll be there and and I hope you could find some things to protect, you know, protect our, you know, our, the neighborhood because, you know, again, it changes a neighborhood. A caregiver, you know, been a long term lease there and so it does not change the neighborhood. An in-law apartment, and there are probably many illegal in-in-law apartments here in Needham, right? Because, you know, even this 800 square feet thing, you know, is is very limiting. I would, I would, I wouldn't be, I would be open, you know, given the restrictions of caregivers and family members, I would be open to increasing it because that's really tiny.
I think we are.
How do you build an auxiliary site thing on, you know, a separate building? You can't build that 800 square foot separate building. It's a.
So let us, let us get there. Let me also say, Jeff, because you raised a very important point. And for anyone that's listening now or later, this is us making the sausage, trying to resolve our public policy on ADUs that will take the form soon of an actual zoning bylaw amendment. In order to get to that step, we have to have a meeting with the select board. They have to agree to take it on and they, to agree to put it on the warrant. And then they will, they will refer it back to us, at which time we will have a public hearing before we get to town meeting. And I expect that we'll have a robust discussion, both at that public hearing and on the town floor, as we should, the town to resolve this.
That's why I'm here and make the sausage. I like the mess.
You're, it's important to have people in the kitchen.
You know, that's what I always say about town meeting, that when people get up on the floor and, you know, and they start throwing things out and you go, and where were you in the beginning of the process, right?
Here you are.
Here I am.
And the process is better for it.
This is not a hearing, although it's been helpful to hear both Oscar and Jeff. Thank you.
So I want to now.
We have to, we have to get.
Continue.
Continue here.
So.
But as far as the, I think we're talking about the primary, we got past the primary residence and we're talking about number three, right?
Number three is the whole side street issue.
Yeah.
When you say a door has to face a side street, you maybe-
So we're going to address it, right?
Yes. It's the front door. A similar, I think, a similar-
Oh, a front door issue.
Number three under ADUs.
Wait, where, where are you looking, Jean?
I think she's looking at an email from John.
Oh.
She's looking at the email from John.
I'm working from that, as was our latest, our latest red line, without further changes.
Okay, I follow, thank you.
But, just as we talked about this with the three-car garages, we're going to talk about this, about how we define the side street with regard to the entrance. So the entrance to the third, to the ADU is not the prominent front door entrance.
Well, John has some comments on that.
Yep.
So John, do you want to?
No, no, I just pointed out you needed to address that issue. And I think, I think we know how to address it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I personally have no problem with having two entrances on the front of the house. I've got two entrances on the front of my house.
Right.
Well, a lot of people have two entrances on the front of the house.
I don't have a problem with that either.
And I don't know, Jean, why you have a problem with having two entrances on the front of the house.
It's the way it was drafted originally, let me see now, it says-
I mean, if you don't have this provision, you can fall back on, it has to keep the look of a single-family house. And maybe you don't have to be this specific.
I mean, what about, let's bring up something interesting like mailboxes. Other than-
That's massive.
No, the point being is, all of a sudden, the ADU has a mailbox on it.
It's subsection G of 31531, subsection G, compliance with the ingress and egress provisions.
Of the building code, okay.
Yeah, and then, shall not detract from the single-family appearance of the dwelling.
Yeah.
Then where there are two, and this is the way it has been now for several years, where there are two or more existing entrances on the front facade of a dwelling, and modifications are made to any such entrance, the result shall be that one of, it's as worded presently, one appears to be the principal entrance.
Right.
And so it's the same concept. So I was just trying to make it clear, exactly how that works. But same concept as it has had.
Okay.
Where a new exterior entrance is provided, it shall be on the facade of the dwelling. Well, then you add, where a new exterior entrance is provided.
Yes.
It shall be on the facade of the dwelling that faces a side street or a real lot line.
Yes, not on the facade, it's the front lot.
I think, I think that's-
A new entrance that wasn't there before.
Yeah, and I don't know why you're requiring that.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't, I don't know why it can't be, even if you're adding a new front entrance, it can't be on the front of the building. As long as we keep the first sentence, which says that the result is that the entrance to the principal dwelling appears to be the primary entrance, and the entrance to the ADU appears to be secondary.
Right, so let it be, let it be in the front.
We just lost Jeff Heller.
As front, as long as it appears, as long as it appears.
As long as it still looks like a single-family house.
Yeah.
All right, we can work with that, and it is very similar to what we have now.
Actually, maybe we should keep the language that you added, so that the addition to the ADU entrance does not detract from the single-family appearance of the property. I like that language.
Uh huh, okay.
Keep that in.
Yeah.
So now we're not deleting where, we're not deleting where a new exterior entrance is-
No, no, we are deleting that, we're deleting where a new exterior, oh.
Where's new exterior, what I was trying to do is being very specific, so that the building inspector, for the most part, can say, yes.
I understand.
That's-
Where a new exterior entrance is provided to the ADU, the addition of the ADU entrance shall not detract from the single-family appearance of the property.
So what?
That's enough.
That sound.
John, did you get that?
I did, and for what it's worth, there hasn't been a single of the 10 we've approved that involved a new entrance.
Okay.
A new entrance.
Right.
Not, not yet.
Our original, our ADU now provides that an interior doorway is provided between the principal dwelling unit and the ADU is a means of access. And I think it's worth keeping that.
Yep.
Yeah, we're not, we're not missing that.
So there we have it, on our entrances. All right, so we've dealt with the corner lots, we're going to, we're going to work, we're going to work up some language for that.
We don't need it with what you've done.
The occupancy permit expiring in three years.
Did I understand that the building inspector agrees, and you've agreed you should take that out?
The building inspector agrees, as long as you have the provision, actually, John, that you had suggested that you retain in your, in your special permits about giving him the right to ask for that information at any time he deems appropriate.
Not a special permit, you mean a-
Occupancy permit.
A permit.
Yeah.
Right, so basically, the, I think the way we had drafted it, we retained the language in there about a renewal every three years. And John has suggested that we add language that basically gave the building inspector the rights to ask for who was occupying the unit at any time he felt was appropriate. And that with that provision, we would no longer need this three-year renewal provision. And the building commissioner actually agrees, if the board agrees.
And we do have that language upon, on section J, upon written request from the building commissioner, the owner will provide, and could be asked at any time, will provide the evidence. So we'll get, we'll get rid of the three-year, but keep the new language about the written request.
I don't know if this is a red herring or not, but I was giving thought to this. We're talking about requiring a lease. What if, what if I enter into a lease with Oscar for $100 for the 12-month period? Does that matter?
I don't think we're saying it has to be for any particular amount of money.
And do we want it to?
It's going to be a nightmare.
I know we discussed this at a prior-
We didn't discuss the issue of the value of the lease, in other words, what if it's a ruse?
A ruse for what?
Still trying to formulate the thought. But I do-
You know, the problem is, you say it has to be a lease for fair market value, and now, and now the building inspector is going to have to determine that?
Yeah.
I understand, I understand their challenges with it, but I, I just wanted to raise the question. But, you know, it's not, but I oppose the idea of requiring it be fair market rent, because if I want to rent to Oscar, you know, for an affordable housing rent, it should be my right.
So you've got, you've got the situation, where you have an elderly person or an elderly couple who want to stay in their house, but they can no longer maintain it.
Yep.
They don't need the income.
They just need someone to-
But what they need is to have somebody there who's going to shovel the snow.
Yeah.
And who's going to take care of the lawn.
And that's a value.
Okay, and that's a value.
Yep.
And so they have a friend, they have a friend, because it's not a family member. They have a friend who's willing to live in the other unit and help them take care of the house. It's not a caregiver situation, because they're not ill.
Right.
Okay? What's wrong with that?
Thank you.
And I had a dwelling unit that my children, younger adult children lived in. But when our younger adult children grew up, twice I let people from my church to live there, who were experiencing separation, from marital separation, and who needed a place to live.
And now they can have a stove.
And they can have a stove. We didn't charge anywhere near market rent. This was just to do a favor, to do a charity to the people from my church.
But it shouldn't be a gas stove.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to raise it, I don't want to get distracted by-
There are situations like that.
Very good. So then the next question is in five, in G.
I think, I think they were, I just said, I don't think you need to say explicitly you can appeal, because as a matter of law, you can always appeal from the building inspector's decision.
Yes.
It's just unnecessary words.
I agree, we can delete that.
In J.
Yeah. And then six was just that you put it into, when the unit was in the house, but you didn't put it in to the separate unit by special permit. So you, you either need to put it in both places or make it a separate section.
Yep.
So then you're suggesting the paragraph, the building commissioner shall not deny a building permit or occupancy permit for an ADU within a single-family building under section 3.15.3.1, due to concern that the above referenced standards are not met unless the building commissioner requests and obtains a determination as to the issue of compliance with these standards from the design review board, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I just think that's a bad idea. I mean, I think we ought to let it be the building commissioner decides.
I agree.
No, but John-
It could, it could take forever, and who knows if they don't add?
John, if, if the building commissioner denies the permit, then without this language, they're in front of you. They're appealing to the ZBA, that's their remedy, isn't it?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have an appeal every two years.
Okay.
All right.
Please, what are we talking about now?
We're talking about taking this paragraph, this last paragraph.
We'll wait down there, okay.
I think we wanted to have the building, I think we wanted Dave to be able to ask the build, to ask the design review board to weigh in if he had, if he had a question.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that's fine.
He can do that.
He has a question, he can seek advice.
Yeah.
But, um-
But if he doesn't have a question, I think you ought to be able to decide it and be done. Not go through a two- or three-month process of waiting for a design review.
John, what I was trying to do was make this be, be simple, actually. I had two options originally. One is, it always goes to the design review. It always has to go to the design review. And then I thought, well, if the building inspector feels comfortable making the decision, let the decision be made. And it's only in the case where the building inspector does not feel comfortable making the decision, that the building inspector will refer it to design review, which is less-
That's not what you wrote.
Yes, I did.
No, no, what was in the draft said he can't deny unless the design review supports his denial.
But that, what I imagine would be the rare case. And the case would be more often that he's going to approve it. I can have a different way of wording it, but the idea is, he won't deny it unless he goes to design review and design review agrees it should be denied.
John, my thought was, if I may, my thought was that by having it go to design review, it takes the burden off of the ZBA, and it should be less costly than doing an appeal to the ZBA.
That's probably right.
And that's why I was in favor of going to the design review board, instead of saying, well, if the building inspector denies it legally, the remedy is that they file an appeal to the ZBA. So if you-
Even, even if, even if you do it with design review approval, they could still file an appeal to the ZBA.
Well, if the design review board, you know, agrees with the building commissioner, then yes, they can still, they still have their remedy to appeal to the ZBA.
But are we saying that the building commissioner can deny, but the design review board can approve? And they override the building?
Yes, they would override the building inspector.
Well-
I don't, I don't see that one.
And, you know, and the alternative is, they go to the ZBA. And I don't know what the filing fee is to the ZBA, but, you know, they have to, they have to hire George Shunter Jr., and, you know, it gets expensive.
I can't see how the design review board is overriding the building commissioner.
No, I don't think the design review is overriding the building commissioner. The building commissioner is seeking the advice of the design review board.
That's not what we're worrying, we're saying that if he denies it, he shall not deny it.
Yes.
Without going to the design review board first.
Yes, but then he goes to-
That's not saying he has the discretion to go to the design review board.
No.
It's saying, if he's going to, if he's going to deny it, it must go to the design review board. Do not pass go, do not collect $200.
Yeah, yeah, but that doesn't, but that, but that doesn't say, that doesn't say the design review board has to agree with him or disagree with him. It just says, bring it to them, get their opinion. If they agree or disagree, if they, if they agree with him, fine, if they disagree with him, he can still keep his position of denying it, and that's the way it goes. And then at that point, they have the choice to go before the ZBA.
That's right. At that point, the building commissioner can either approve it or deny it.
Yeah, it's his choice at that point.
Either that, or we take this out and they just go right to the ZBA, which, which will save time.
Well, I was trying to make things easier by just going to this design review board.
Well, yeah.
Well, I think you, I think you ought to just say, before issuing an occupancy permit, the building inspector may consult with the design review board.
Yes.
But, but leave the, the yes or no to the building inspector.
Okay, and if he says no, it's an appeal to the ZBA.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Why is it under the occupancy permit versus the approval of the construction in the first place? What order, isn't that, isn't that to some degree?
Whatever, yeah.
Oh, is it the occupancy permit, or is it the building?
Building permit, yeah. I guess it's a building.
You may not really be having a building permit, you may just be having somebody who's putting in a stove.
Yeah, internal construction, yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's an occupancy permit.
Oh, okay.
So-
I could possibly first build him, but I appreciate what you're saying.
So the-
Well, but you're right, if it's, because if we're talking about maintaining, well, what we're talking about here is maintaining the look of a single-family house. And if we're talking about maintaining the look of the single-family house, and you're talking about construction.
And then you're talking about construction.
We're not talking about internal. So you're really talking about before the issuance of a building permit.
Right, right.
Not the issuance of an occupancy permit.
I believe that's really what we're talking about.
So Lee, you have, okay, you have that changed, Lee?
Yeah, so we'll, so we've got it, that'll be May, I can do the, what I have it is, the building commissioner may, due to concern of the, that the above referenced standards are not met, request and obtain a determination as to the issue of compliance with these standards from the design review board. They may, okay.
Do you want, yeah, but do you want them to make the determination or just give advice?
It's determination, the correct word, obtain advice, okay?
Advice.
Advice from, okay.
I mean, you don't really even have to say it. I mean, the building, the building inspector could always go to design review and say, what do you think?
The building inspector usually go to the design review board or something.
No, but I, I think we wanted him to have a way out if he needed a second opinion.
Yes, yes.
Because, John, if he wants a second opinion, you don't want him going to you, and we don't want him coming here.
You know, I, I just, I could be wrong, but I just don't perceive that there either going to be that many ADUs or ones that are controversial. I mean, there hasn't, there hasn't been a single one yet that was controversial.
Well, John, John, I think to some degree, I think what we're talking about is, when this goes to town meeting, there are going to be a lot of questions. And then people are going to be looking for a lot of protection, as far as what can and cannot happen. So to some degree, that's what some of this language is about, to make certain that there's protection in there, and people are comfortable. Is it going to change how many ADUs there are or aren't? Probably not to a very large degree, but it may change the comfortability of people's, you know, wanting to approve it or not approve it. They could change that.
You're right, you're right.
Maggie, do you have a, do you want to speak on this for a second? Name an address, please.
Maggie Brusy, Port-au-Prince.
Thank you.
In this process, if someone's going to build an ADU, they go to the building inspector to get a building permit. The neighbors have no notice at that point, right? They have no notice that anything is going on. So what we're talking about is whether it maintains the look of a single-family house. And who that's going to matter to is the neighbors. There's no opportunity for them to know anything about it, to look at the plan, and-
Except now, if, if they put an addition onto their house, there's no notice to the neighbors.
Yes, under the existing-
What we're talking about is putting on, and addition to the house that happens to have a stove and an oven in it.
Okay, so when you put an addition on the house, is there a, a subjective standard like this? Like it has to, so we're talking about a subjective standard?
Bylaws, it has to abide by, basic bylaws.
But are those subjective bylaws, like setbacks and, yeah, yeah. But this is a subjective standard, that you're asking the building commissioner, without the input of the people who are impacted, right?
And we're concerned that the building commission will not feel comfortable-
And we're concerned that the building commission will not feel comfortable doing that.
Which in most cases he does, because that's his job professionally and can determine if it's.
He's not an architect. It's not his job professionally to say that this maintains the character of a single-family house. That's a judgment call that's usually made by architects, which is why these types of things usually do go to the design review board. And that at least is a public hearing. So while they will have no right to speak at that hearing, they could at least.
It's not, it's not really a hearing, it's just a discussion in public.
Excuse me, you're right. I'm sorry, a public meeting.
Yeah.
The neighbors could at least witness that concerns, you know, that there was some process, it wasn't just, you know, oh yeah, I know you, I like you. Sure.
Yeah, they'd be allowed to speak also. If they went to the design review board, they let, they let them speak.
Yeah, they have the discretion to let them speak, but they have no right.
But they might not know that the process is happening. There's no notice.
Except, except, except the design review board's agenda is published.
At least it's a public agenda. So, so I just ask you to consider those realities where you're talking about a subjective judgment call that impacts most, the people most impacted by whether it still looks like a single family is the neighborhood and maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood. And, and I ask you to think about whether it is appropriate at any point in this to give the neighbors notice of this going on so that they could know that something's happening and they could look at the plan and, and talk to the building commissioner and say, you know, this looks great, or hey, this is, I have a concern about this. So I just wanted to raise those.
Part of my concern about that would be, I understand why you're perhaps bringing it up. And I, I understand even, even more so perhaps why the design review board aspect. My concern about, you know, letting neighbors know is, in some cases, that could be a very private situation. They need help. They, they want to build this, they want to kiss a house. It may be in some cases it would be great if, you know, the community knows and they help out. But in some ways, in some cases, it could be a very private decision that they're making. They don't want people to know.
Okay. When you apply for a building permit, do you have to say why you're building?
No, you don't have to say that.
No.
So no personal information needs to be exchanged and it's a public plan, like I could.
Building permit for an ADU.
Yes.
That means that you're putting in a stove and an oven.
That's an occupancy permit, not a building permit.
Well, when.
Well, no, if you're putting on a, if you're putting on an addition.
Okay.
That you're planning to have an ADU.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're now going to the building inspector.
Yeah.
Both for, for a building permit.
Which is public.
Yeah, which is public. So, yeah.
You can search your neighbors anytime.
You can search.
Why you would do that continually, I don't know, but.
And you're saying, and I'm going to put in a stove because I'm gonna, because my son and his wife are going to move in.
But you don't need to say your son and wife are going to move in.
Well, if you're putting a stove in.
You're putting an application.
If you're putting a stove in so that it's an ADU.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to show to the building, to the building commissioner.
Yeah, yeah, you have to hit the situation.
That you meet the definition of an ADU. So who's going to live there?
Whether a family member, caregiver.
Or a lessee if this passes.
So is the, are these regulations about who can live there and what the situation, are these only relevant when you're putting in the stove or building the addition?
That's right.
Yes.
Then down the line.
Because you can put an addition on your house.
Yeah.
You can put a 2,000-foot addition.
And put in a kitchenette.
Yeah.
And a bathroom.
Yeah.
You don't have a stove. You have a microwave and a toaster oven.
Yeah.
Okay? And you don't have to meet these requirements.
I understand, but if you want to put in the full stove, like, so I want to have my, you know, son and daughter-in-law live there.
Right.
Okay. But, you know, then they establish themselves professionally and have a child and they move out.
Right.
So now I have this place. I don't need to seek anybody's permission to do something with that, right? It's already built.
Well, you're supposed to remove the stove.
Yeah.
And if the building commissioner finds out that the place is now empty, he can come in and say, you, you gotta remove the stove.
Hold on, hold on.
Why?
You can rent them now. So it's just.
Well, yeah, but now you have to come in with a lease and say, you know, well, no, I'm gonna, I'm saying if it's vacant. You know, but if you say, well, no, I, I have a tenant and we're in the process of putting together a lease, he's going to say, oh, okay, fine, give me the lease when.
You're talking about the future. Now, you cannot. Now, our zoning doesn't allow them to do that.
To do what?
To, to have a lessee.
Correct.
Right, right.
You know, I'm talking about whether it's a caregiver, you know, a family member moves out, there's a stove that's still in there, and the building commissioner finds out about it, and he comes in and he says, you gotta remove the stove. And that's in the bylaw now.
Okay.
If he, if he finds out that, you know, you're not meeting the requirements, he can require you to make it so that it's, it no longer qualifies as an ADU, which basically means it may not even mean removing the stove, but may just mean disconnecting the stove.
Or capping the electric or doing something with the plumbing.
You know, or whatever. Okay? And that, but.
Yeah.
But the homeowner can say, I'm going to have a caregiver here. I'm just looking for a caregiver, you know, give me some time. I'm going to come back to you with the application because the caregiver is going to move in.
Okay, so is it clear, and forgive me, I have not read the proposed bylaw in great detail.
I've read it. That doesn't mean I understand it.
Is it clear to the homeowner that they will need to continually seek the building commissioner's approval for the use of this unit?
As, so.
If it changes. Like if my daughter moves out, now I have to, if my son's moving in, do I have to?
So this comes up to a point that John had raised. As, as it had been written, you have to every three years renew with, you know, affirmatively declare to the building commissioner.
Okay, yeah.
John's comment and recommendation is to remove that ongoing obligation on a, on a perpetual basis.
How can bylaw have that obligation?
Okay.
And to liberalize it.
Okay.
We're saying, you know, you know, and John, and John, I think you're, you're advocating that we remove that requirement, right?
Correct.
I am, and replace it with a provision the building inspector can ask anytime. And as a practical matter, what's going to happen, the building inspector is not going to ask unless some neighbor complains. Right.
Right. So someone, you know, is suspicious about someone else, the building commissioner looks into it. And, but beyond that, it's not going to be an ongoing affirmative declaration and requirement.
Right. The next door neighbor has an ADU and has a, and has a family member there. You know, and you see the family member, you speak to them over the fence, you know, and all of a sudden, you're no longer seeing the family member. You're now seeing five Babson kids, okay, living around the house. So you're going to go to the building commissioner and say, you know, you know, you're going to drop a dime and say, although it's probably a quarter now, you're going to drop a quarter and say, I'm not going to tell you who, who I am, but at this particular house, a family member has moved out and somebody else has moved in. Do you have a lease on record?
Okay, so I might do that because I'm attuned to these issues. But I would suggest that the average neighbor is, is not going to, they're going to think, I can't control what my neighbor does. It stinks that, that it's noisy in this neighborhood now, or, or whatever the issue is. I, I just think it, it is really taking the teeth out of your ADU law if, once that initial building permit is granted, by not having any check-ins or any obligation on the, stated obligation on the owner's part to.
I agree with you. Okay, my original thought was, there should be a period of time when all the person has to do, it's even not a burden on the building commissioner, but the building commissioner thinks it's a burden, is once every period of time, whether it's a year or two years or three years, the homeowner has to walk into the building commissioner's office or do it by mail and just fill out a form and sign a form that says the place is still being occupied by, by so-and-so who is my caregiver, or so-and-so who is my son, or so-and-so who is my lessee under a one-year lease, which, which is on file in your office. Just file a form with the building commissioner.
Right. And then that alerts them, because you'll, you'll also have innocent homeowners who don't know that, like, oh, I should be maintaining this permission.
But the building commissioner and Mr. Schneider thinks that that's a burden on the building commissioner that we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to do.
Shouldn't have to do.
So. Process the paper, process the paperwork.
He shouldn't, he shouldn't instigate the three-year check-in. It should be the homeowner to something, to instigate the check-in.
So.
Correct, but can't we put an affirmative obligation?
File every year to show that you meet the terms of the ADU?
John, you look like you want to address this.
But, by the way, something that this does raise is what's going to be the rule if it's vacant?
Right. I was giving thought to that, that I think it's, you know, it's a flashlight in a, in a dark area because there will be, certainly for those that are rented out, there will be periods of time where they're not able to rent it out. And that could be six months, six weeks, six years. And there could be periods of time where, where there's no caregiver and it's another four years before someone or 10 years before the other people in the house decide to move. That's, that's, that's going to happen. And, and now you have a scenario where you have your second kitchen, which culturally, which, and which is interesting because we're not allowed to discriminate, you know, against, you know.
People that like to cook.
Well, effectively for, you know, you know, it can be regarded as racist if there are some communities that cook, like mine, that require a kitchen to be, you know, kosher, that doesn't serve any meat or any milk, and that they ought to be separate. So that's, so that can be regarded. So setting that aside, you now have a scenario where you have two kitchens, two stoves.
I mean, I don't see, I don't see the racist, oppressive part, but I don't see what the big deal is that when it's empty, it just stays empty until it's not, I don't, I don't see why, I don't see why stove, I don't see why it has to, stove has to be disconnected, ripped out, taken out. I don't quite understand why that's so important, because at some point, it will serve the purpose again or something. I don't see why it has to change.
But not, not necessarily.
Well, not necessarily.
And the other issue that came up at town meeting with this, which is why there was an affirmative three-year ongoing obligation, was because, you know, someone else will, may not maintain it to the same standard and it could, and it, and that can have an impact on fire. It could potentially have an impact, you know, on water and can impact negatively a neighbor in that sense. But I.
There's nothing in the ADU that we have here that requires the stove to be removed. It's entirely up to the building inspector, whatever the building inspector thinks is necessary to enforce the, the reification of the occupancy permit. So.
Right.
I do want, I do want to note that we have two other issues that John very helpfully raised, and I want to get through those last two issues. So, and the, the two issues are, a further thought on ADUs, we ought to make it explicit that any accessory building containing an ADU must comply with the setback requirements for a dwelling. Now, I hadn't drafted it that way. If you have an existing garage or an existing barn and you want to have an ADU in that garage or barn, if the garage or barn is now within the five feet setback that's required for accessory structures, I haven't made any, I mean, in this draft, we haven't made any distinction to say that accessory structure has to be any farther back.
I had this discussion with Lee.
Yeah.
About the fact that if you're going to have an ADU that's above the garage, you're going to go up over 15 feet. And once you go above 15 feet, you have a different setback. It's not five feet.
Ah, I see.
But, but what if somebody builds an attached bungalow that's under 15 feet? That's what struck me. I mean, I think in most cases, people will be building over a garage and it will trigger the requirement to be back. But somebody could have a garage under 15 feet attached to an ADU structure that's under 15 feet, and they wouldn't be required to comply with the side setback.
Do we want to make sure?
Just, just in my opinion, if someone is living in a unit, it ought to comply with the side setback.
Okay, that's the issue. We can draft a language. Do we want to draft a language that any ADU that's attached to or within an accessory dwelling unit, at least the ADU portion of that building has to be, has to comply with the setback requirement for, for over 15-foot heights if it's above, and if it's not above, then it, it has to comply with the setback for, for a house.
I think it, yes.
Okay.
But I don't think that I would limit that to the accessory building. I think it would, I would also make it required of the main building too.
Oh, I think it already is required of the main building.
Part of the main building. I see.
Yeah.
I do, I do think that generally speaking, as we heard from Jeff earlier tonight, even though it's by special permit, the issue of a separate, allowing this on a separate, separate structure.
That's the other issue. The other issue, as you said, is whether you could, you happen to have a garage, can you have a bungalow over here that's not attached to the garage at all? I want to make sure that we've drafted in such a way that you cannot do that. Is that correct?
So, yeah, that you're prohibited by the dimensional requirements from, but I'm also just saying, generally speaking, I'm not convinced right now at town meeting, even with a special permit, that we'll get approval of the whole zoning bylaw change that would allow.
Separate structure.
A separate, separate detached structure by special permit.
Knowing that the ADU that's in an attached building is going to require a special permit with hearings and notice to a butters, are we okay with that accessory building being, like take, converting the garage to an accessory dwelling unit? So there's no more garage. Is that fine?
We're talking about.
That's attached?
No, detached.
If you're taking the garage.
Is it, is it attached or detached?
Detached.
A detached garage.
A detached garage.
Detached, right. An accessory dwelling, excuse me, accessory building.
And it only has to be five feet from the lot line?
And, and as, as John points out, accessory buildings have to be five feet from the lot line. Are we okay with that being converted to an accessory dwelling unit?
I don't think so. I think as John says, if it's going to be occupied, it must conform to the zone.
We don't say that now.
Five feet seems, five feet seems really close to the property line to me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I.
What should it be, Natasha?
No, I think it, I think five feet is way too close.
She hasn't, she hasn't suggested a certain setback. She's just saying that five is too close.
Well, it should be, I'm agreeing with John. It should be the setback.
For the house.
Yes, the living, living spaces.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the other question is, are we okay with allowing more than one accessory dwelling unit in the backyard of a property?
More than one accessory ADU or more than one?
Building.
Accessory.
More than one building, too.
Accessory building.
Yeah. A garage over here, an accessory dwelling unit over there.
And a guest house on the other side.
Right. I mean, certainly not an SRB. If someone wants to do it, I think an SRA or RRC maybe. I'm not, I'm, I don't, this is going to get, I think, I don't think we're going to get that passed at town meeting. I think we got to get this done, focus on this. I think we'll have support for this. Let's get some experience for, you know, for three years or so. Then the building commissioner can tell us how many we have. We've got 10 in a restricted environment in a restricted market. Maybe we'll have 20 as a result of liberalizing it in a three-year period. And we'll have a little more information on how they're being built. And we'll have a little more information on how they're being built. And then we can go through, I think, and resolve whether we want to allow, as John just said, four different structures.
Well.
On a 20,000 square foot lot.
How are we wanting it now?
Not allow accessory dwelling units at all in accessory buildings?
I think that from the people that I've been, I've spoken to a lot of people over the last, over the last 10 days. And I haven't heard much support. They support the goal of liberalizing and creating, and creating ADUs as part of an attached structure. But.
But not a detached structure.
But not, but not as a, a brand new detached structure.
Well, I think whether it's brand new or converting the garage, which has a far enough setback to accommodate living spaces, I'm not sure if it, I'm not sure if it should matter whether it's a brand new or not brand new. Is it, I mean, someone can make a garage and two years later just say, okay, it's not brand new, I'm putting in ADU. They probably wouldn't do that, but I don't know if it should matter whether it's brand new or not brand new. If, if, if we're going to allow it on a not brand new structure, on an existing structure that is has, that meets the house, living space setback, then it shouldn't matter. I don't think it should matter whether it's brand new or not brand new.
I hate to say this, but I agree with Art.
No, I disagree.
You should agree with me plenty of times, Paul.
Don't leave your, your weight man hanging.
You've got a date today, Paul.
Adam?
Yes.
You, you, you know, maybe you draft this and then you get to your public hearings.
Yes.
And if you get a lot of pushback, it would be easy enough to take out this second section.
I just, I appreciate saying that.
Take it out, but we can't add it.
I understand, I understand that. So I, I just, I just want to raise it because I've canvassed, you know, our constituents or our residents. And that's been the consistent feedback. Now, I understand the approach, I'm not disagreeing with that approach. But I just want to raise it that we, you know, that there is a risk of killing the whole thing. But we'll have to just see what happens both, you know, at our hearing and then subsequently, you know, at town meeting. I'm not saying.
In our next draft, how should we address the questions that John asked, should we?
I think we've resolved, I think we've resolved them that with regard to an existing structure, it can't be, you know, in order for it to be occupied, it has to preserve the setbacks that are otherwise required for an occupied unit, a dwelling.
Okay. And can it be? We have to be, should we be very explicit that can, that can only be one ADU in an accessory dwelling?
Explicit about that, but what you're not explicit, you've already been explicit about that.
Yeah, okay.
One ADU. But the problem is, do you want a garage, an ADU and a shed? Yes, exactly. Yes. You're the next contestant on.
Oscar, 67 River Highway. I do think if we have a situation, part of this is to try and make it as easy as possible to do these, right? So if somebody just has a house, they have limited funds, and they got a garage, they got to make, they can make an ADU, cool. So if it doesn't go to a second floor, if they just convert the garage and it's within five feet, that should be allowed.
I understand that's your opinion.
Okay, I'm just saying, maybe there's a way that that could be, so in other words, you're saying that you have to move the garage.
See, I don't agree, I don't think people should be able to be living five feet from their neighbors.
If it's in an existing garage and not on a second floor.
Because you're now five feet from your next door neighbor and you've got people living within five feet of your next door neighbor. You don't just have a shed or a garage, which is storage, or just your car that's sitting there overnight, five feet from your next door neighbor's property.
It's very different.
And if you're in single residence B, you've got houses that are, that are fairly close together.
Yeah.
And, you know, I wouldn't want to have somebody living who's five feet from my property line.
And you, you know, you can imagine, you know, that it compounds the problem. If you're in, you know, in areas where you've got less than 12,000, I think the standard is 10, but you've got less than 12,000 square foot lots. And you have, you know, and you, and you have more than an occasional entry and exit to pick up of, you know, a shovel or a lawnmower or a snow blower. And like, you know, that's why we're making the public policy determination and recommendation that, that they can't, they can't have that.
That's why we have our setbacks to begin with.
Yeah.
And if part of the goal is to preserve the single family character, if we change that goal later, that's a different question. But if that's part of the goal, then that's one of the elements to achieve that. So I think, I.
Well, did we answer the other question about how many accessory structures on a lot?
I don't think we have.
No.
John says it leaves, we are leaving open the possibility of multiple accessory structures, like a garage and a separate ADU guest house.
Wait, 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 wait. Right now, we allow multiple accessory.
We do.
Buildings on a lot.
In SRB.
Yes.
What?
In SRB.
All over town.
And, and John is saying, should we be careful and not do that for ADUs, or should we, would it be okay?
You can only have one ADU on a lot. So right now, you can have a detached garage, you can have a storage shed, you can have a cabana that's next to your pool.
And you can have an ADU or top lip to there.
You can have an ADU, you know, so, you know, just because you have a stove, John, just because you have a stove in one of the units, what difference does it make?
All right.
The difference is, is that there are people living there.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, but people can live there without a stove and you don't even have to go through the ADU process.
This is a separate structure.
Okay, I think we're.
People can't live in a separate structure even without a stove.
Yeah, John, John, at first, initially, I thought at first, John, you were referring to the fact that multiple structures which have multiple ADUs, but you're referring to simply multiple structures, is that correct?
So you practically have, yes, yes, you practically have a house, an ADU, a garage and a shed. Now, in the garage and in the shed, they're not heated, there's maybe some electricity, and there's very, and there's maybe a little bit of water. But it's not a toilet, it's not going into a septic, it's not going into, you know, stormwater.
And what's to prevent me from building that now and just not putting in a stove?
Nothing.
You, 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 you can't have a dwelling, a separate dwelling unit?
You can't have, how many more, Lee, how many, you can only, how many non-dwelling units can you have in a lot? Structures on a lot?
There's no restriction on the number of accessory structures that you can have. There are setback standards, there's FAR standards, there's coverage requirements, but there's nothing that speaks to how many accessory structures you can have in a residential zone on a residential lot.
So I would consider.
But you can't have a second dwelling unit.
You're right, you're right.
But John is right, you could not have a second dwelling unit. And so you're not going to be building a, a structure with all the amenities except a stove, because you can't, you can't have.
So allowing an ADU in a separate, in a separate structure, if we allow that, we are contradicting the bylaw that we have that says you can't have.
Correct.
You can't have a second dwelling.
This is definitely a new development, yes.
So we would actually need to amend that section to say, except for an ADU.
Other than for an ADU.
Other than for an ADU.
Other than for a permissible ADU as provided for in 3.1.5.
Right.
So nowhere in town and any, you know, there are no guest houses allowed?
Correct.
In any, any zoning area of town?
No guest houses. I mean, I mean, my view is that if somebody wants to go with an ADU, they ought to be willing to restrict how many accessory buildings.
I tend to agree. Okay, so you still don't have resolution.
I've been working with Lee on this, I just want to have the direction.
Yes, I understand. So let's do a roll call. Natasha?
It's clear as much.
Natasha, do you support, how many, how many structures do you support on a lot? Regardless of the, let's say the lot's 7,500 square feet and not 75,000 square feet.
Okay.
Let's try and give it 10,000.
I know.
I mean.
It's permissible.
It feels to me that, that for a very, very small lot, I'd be more, more than, more than two, more than the main house and the, and the additional structure seems like a lot, you know, seems, seems right, but I mean, I guess if there's a shed, I guess it depends on the sizes of the, of the accessory, you know, structures.
So why are we asking, I'm sorry, this is your, why are we asking about accessory structures? When it sounds like we're heading in the direction of not allowing ADUs on the accessory structures? Why, that's a whole different part of the bylaw. So why are we, why are you addressing something out of the ADU dwell at this point? What, what am I missing here?
What I'm saying is, if you want to have an ADU, you've got to put it in the garage. You can't build a separate.
Yeah.
In separate structures and see what happens at the hearing. Because if we put it in and we get pushback at the hearing and we decide that we want to take it out, we can take it out. But we can't, we can't not put it in now and then put it in later.
Right. John just made a really good point.
We didn't hear it, go ahead, John.
What was my point in this, it's just, it's just, just, I, I, no, I mean, I, 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 I think that if you're on a small lot and you want to put an ADU, you ought to have to put it in the garage. It shouldn't be a separate guest house.
Right.
And, you know, and maybe you want to allow multiple ones in, in signal residence A or maybe just in the rural district. I mean, there are, there are a lot of residence A lots that are tiny. And we spend a lot of time authorizing them to make expansions because everything is non-conforming.
If you're going to have a small lot, you're still going to be required to meet the setback requirements.
Yes. And there's, there's also a floor area ratio.
There's also a floor area ratio requirement, so that's going to severely restrict your ability to have all these extra, extra units.
Well, the truth of the matter is, we actually haven't gamed this out. We haven't looked at and applied, like built out a model, sketched out a model to look and see what on 7,500 square feet, 12,000 square feet, 18,000 and, you know, three acres, you know, would look like to have a 10 by 10, you know, sun cast, prefabricated storage structure that'll have garbage cans, another one that may have, another one that may have a snow blower, bicycles, lawn mowers, another two car garage, and in addition to that, an ADU.
Yeah, I'm going to push back a little bit against the, I heard a comment, if, if, you know, at least in this initial thing, to see what happens at a public hearing where the ADU has to be in a garage or above a garage. I'm going to push back against that because that totally defeats the possibility, I shouldn't say totally defeats, it greatly reduces the possibility of the, of the elderly person that wanted, that living there, you know, as an option. So I don't think we should, because they're going to have to walk upstairs. A lot of people, a lot of people don't, no, no.
They're going to have to, they're going to have to build an ADU that's connected to the house.
Well, I.
If it's an elderly person.
No, I, I know, I can appreciate, I can appreciate that.
They may not have the room to do it, but they already have a detached garage on their 10,000 square foot lot.
That has a big enough setback, again, I, I mean, I can appreciate what we're talking about. And John, I can appreciate why the garage aspect of it. But if we're at least in the initial umbrella, what we're heading for, to try to, try to have this be a possibility in the future for the person to then, the elderly person to move into, it can't, we can't force it to have to be on the second floor, on a, on a, on a separate structure. We can't do that. I don't, I don't, I don't believe we can force it on the second floor.
Well, I, I don't think we're forcing that, it's, it's just that the ADU will have to be attached to the garage. It could be on, it could be on the bottom floor.
Are you talking about, you talking about a detached garage, John?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
We're not saying it has to be on the second floor, we're just saying it has to be one building.
Okay, that's part of the.
The ADU.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's at least my, my proposal was to say you can only have one accessory building over a certain size. So you will be allowed to have smaller sheds. But, but then, if you're going to build an ADU, you ought to have to combine it with the garage.
I understand that. So we still need to give Jean and Lee a resolution here. And we have other agenda items. So, and it's just after 10, yeah. So should we pick up on this last issue and move on?
Okay, yeah, I, I think we should. I think we should allow people to have an ADU and a garage.
I don't want to have, I don't want to continue.
Oh, oh, you don't want to continue it, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Not at this time, what I want to do is either take a vote and decide it now, or put a pin in it and we'll talk about it. I think we're going to need another meeting.
Jean and Lee have to go back and do some redrafting.
So, so leave this out, put a pin in it and we'll, this will be the last.
Ask the question clearly and I'll answer yes or no, yeah.
So. First, so, so Natasha? Are you clear, are you clear on where we're at?
Okay, I'm going to suggest.
Let's punt it, it's 10 o'clock.
For purposes of drafting.
Yeah.
To give Jean and Lee direction, I'm going to suggest that if the ADU is in a detached structure, then there can only be one other accessory building on the lot.
Okay, that's clear.
So, okay, so just one, one, one accessory unit on the lot besides the main house?
That are detached.
You would have the main house, the detached ADU, the detached garage with an ADU, and you can have one other accessory, one other accessory building, which might be a shed, might be a cabana, might be, but only one other.
But it has to be a limited size unless you want to allow an ADU guest house and a garage. As two separate structures.
That's what, that's what Paul's saying.
We have to limit the size is what John's saying, which I agree with him, otherwise you're going to have.
We're already limiting to 800 or 900 square feet.
For the ADU.
Yeah, the ADU is 900 square feet, the garage is 600 square feet, so what's wrong with that?
The second accessory then could be a garage?
Yeah.
And there's no limit to the size of the, of the second one?
And now if you have a three car garage, by the way, you're not at nine, you're not at 600.
You know something? If you're on a lot that's only 10,000 square feet, you're not going to be able to put all of this on your lot. Because you've got to meet your setback requirements, you've got to meet your FAR requirements.
Open space.
So Lee, Lee, what do you think?
And if you're on South Street.
Yeah.
You know, if you've got a large house that goes down to the river in South Street, why are we arguing about this? Let them have whatever they want, they can build a barn and have four horses.
In the A zone.
Okay, okay.
So, Lee, do you think?
You know, still, for purposes of your drafting, you can have a house and a detached ADU and one other accessory building.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay.
And then we'll argue, and then we'll discuss it more at the next meeting.
I'm just good with that.
For the, yes, let's, okay. Natasha, are you cool with that? Artie, you cool with that?
That's fine, that's fine.
Sure, that's fine.
Let us move forward.
Yes, we can always make it more restrictive.
That's right, yeah.
I, I apologize for all this agony, but I think you're making progress.
No, I think we are.
Do you have any final comments or suggestions?
No.
Thanks for playing tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, John, good to see you.
So. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just about to get there.
I'm ahead of you, trying to end the meeting.
I, so Maggie has raised, has raised an idea, a suggestion for us to revise 5.1.2, the parking table. I, before I call Maggie up to kind of chat a, a little bit about it, Lee, did you have, did you have any comments at this time? Do we have capacity to be able to maneuver this through?
I, I don't, I really don't, I, I mean, we're doing a, you know, a parking study for the downtown now and for Avery Square and for the Avery Square area. So I think that probably it would make. probably it would make the most sense to, if we're going to make adjustments in the parking table, to kind of do it as one comprehensive package that we would put together in the fall. So I think it makes sense to talk about her idea, but I think it probably makes more sense given that, given our schedule. I mean, the zoning needs to be finalized by our next meeting to meet a town meeting schedule for the spring. So effectively to give us enough time. So I think to talk about doing something in the fall, I think probably makes some sense.
So Lee, Artie.
You okay with that, Maggie?
Well, I, I, I think it, I think it makes sense to combine it together and, but, but at the same time, Maggie's here, just wanted to just maybe describe.
Okay, Natasha, do you have any?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Gene or Paul?
I had already asked, but I didn't get the email out to Lee until like after 5 o'clock this afternoon. I'd like to get feedback from Dave Roach and from Ron Schneider as to how they feel about it.
Maggie, you want to join us? I've said your name, but for the record, if you could say your full name and address, please. Thank you.
So just to be clear, the requested changes don't affect the whole table. I'm only talking about the catchall provision, which right now directs the standard to the second edition of the ITE Parking Manual, which was written in 1987, and there have been several updates in the intervening years. And so what we have is kind of this ambiguity. So you look at the regulations. If you're not specifically listed in the table, if your use is not specifically listed in the table, then you're not really sure what is the requirement going to be. Is it the second edition requirement? Is it some updated edition requirement? Or is it something you don't even know about? For example, in 1688, the parking requirement that was used was a letter that was from 1996 that relied on a 95, 96 article in the ITE Journal. So for clarity's sake, it brings, it brings clarity to developers and neighbors and it, and it puts everyone on an even level. So it's not just the people who regularly appear before you and do business with you who know how you work and know what the kind of behind the scenes actions are, that can understand concretely what the requirements are and are going to be. And I understand, oh, parking, we're doing park, something else on parking, let's just do it all together. But this is a very simple and straightforward change. I've already proposed the suggested language. It, it isn't complicated. I don't believe it would be controversial. I think it's a great idea to check in with Dave Roach and get his take on it. And I, I think it's, you can amend the bylaw multiple times. So you could do this now. You could do something else, which is going to be, quite frankly, more extensive, I'm guessing, regarding the specifics of parking in those two districts. Again, this doesn't affect the parking table, the specifics of the parking table. It only affects the the method of having a catchall for uses in all districts that aren't specifically talked about in the parking table.
So I, were you looking for this?
No.
Oh, okay. So I I, I hear you. And I the practice, I think, other than perhaps some exceptional circumstances, has generally been that the I, for any use that's analogous, that, you know, we exercise the discretion of the building inspector. So it's not like it comes out of nowhere based on a similar use.
Right, but no one can figure out what that is unless they know to talk to the building inspector.
Well, it just doesn't happen in a vacuum. It happens because of an ongoing process. And then, in the event the building commissioner is unable to classify an analogous use, then, then the plant, then the planning board recommends that standard to the building commissioner. And you're right to say the second edition, which may have been, as you say, published in 1987. And in your email today, you mentioned, or the other day, whenever it was, I, you mentioned that, you know, there's, they're coming up with a new one, I think, and to be released, IT. This is the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual that they're releasing their sixth edition in 2023. And it's also based on, and it sets out the parking needs of the occupants, the users, the guests, the employees of the proposed business. So it's not like we don't have an ability to do it. I, you know, and to handle, and to handle a catchall parking provision or a question when there is a parking spaces, we're dealing with uses that are not otherwise enumerated elsewhere, you know, in the bylaw. It's not probably perfect. You, you, I think, I agree with you that we, that it should be updated clearly. You know, the second edition, you know, we've got a fifth now and a sixth, sixth coming, where it says, or an alternative technical source, with discretion to the planning board, I mean, you know, equal or, or more applicable source, it's generally starting with the most recent version of that, you know, that we're not relying on the 1987 standard. In most cases, you've identified a scenario where the practice may have been different. It's going to take us a bit of time to get the building commissioner's take, which I agree with, and also I think probably, you know, Tom Roder, do we know when Tom is back?
Uh, next week.
And to get, to get Tom's guidance.
What does Tom have to do with it?
Tom is our head of engineering.
Yeah, but this is, this is something that right now is just the building commissioner.
I under, I understand that, but it also relates to the, to the parking standards and the IT that you'd be familiar with as well. And lastly, is there someone else in?
Well, I, I mean, I mean, the other people we might want to talk to might be Rebecca Brown and John Diaz to get some recommendations on the appropriate standard to use here.
They've been our consultants on parking and traffic.
Right.
Right, but we now, we actually are using a different, aren't we using STAN Tech for the parking study?
We're using STAN Tech for this parking study, but we've used.
GPI.
Yes. For most of the review work that we've done.
I think Paul made a good point about, certainly going to the building commissioner.
Yeah.
He's the one, he's the one that's, all this falls onto him to a very large extent. And, and at some point, you know, going down the line, you know, we're going to be getting bits and pieces of things that, things that have been, he would like to change that don't make any sense to him, that don't have any, that don't create any benefit to the community. I think it makes sense, as Paul is suggesting, going ask the building commissioner and say, hey, take a look at this, is this something, is this a simple change? Have you seen, have you, has this, have you been seeing this and this has been kind of going through your head, like, why, this doesn't make any sense? Maybe it just makes sense to go to him and just say, hey, what can we do?
I don't think anyone's disagreeing with that.
Then, then, then maybe we should just leave it like that. Unless we have, as far as timing, as far as putting a potential article in there, that's where it falls.
Lee? I understand that for an amendment to come out of the planning board, we're running on a tight, very tight timeline. But what's the timeline and what are the requirements?
For the special?
If Maggie were to go forward and get the signatures together for, for a citizen's petition. Because you might be able to do that.
Okay, but.
Okay.
I think you're overestimating my interest in it, like, my interest is in open government, okay? I think this is a change that makes government on an even level for all people, because all people.
But you saw how much time we already took to discuss ADUs.
And garages.
And garages, and we still have another meeting to do that.
I understand. The language is proposed. I don't think you, you could, if you wanted to, use that language to put it in the draft permit and then go through the hearing process and get your feedback from people and change the language and, or take the article out or keep it in. You, you have that ability. So I understand there's a tight timeframe, but there's still runway here and there's still a process ahead that could address. I mean, overall, again, all we're talking about doing is what you're suggesting is currently being done. It's just making it publicly known to anyone, whether they know someone on the planning board to call or not, what the result is.
Gene?
As far as process goes, I don't think the suggestion of having a citizen's petition makes sense in this case. I mean, this is, this is how our bylaw should be worded to be, to be properly enforceable. It isn't a new idea, really. So, but, but I think Lee's first reaction was, we are in the midst of a parking study. We expect that we're going to bring some changes on our parking requirements in the fall.
I don't, I, I.
This should be part of it.
No, I agree with Maggie. This has absolutely nothing to do with that. This is just correcting our catchall clause to bring it up to date. Is really what she's saying. You know, we're referencing, we're referencing a document for the building commissioner to look at that's out of date. And so, and so Maggie's suggesting that we just reword our bylaw to say, if it's not covered elsewhere in the table, and what, what, what we're going to be doing with our parking study is possibly updating our table. But this is just for the provision that says, if it's not covered in the table, the building commissioner has to come up with something and this is where he should look.
But there was actually, there was, there was, do you have the, do you have your email in front of you? I don't, I don't think I have the email. I.
You have the email on your computer, Mr.?
Yes. So you want, okay, so, may I? Thank you very much. So where it says right now, under 21, any use permitted by this zoning bylaw currently states closest similar uses shall be determined by the building inspector. Maggie's proposing to change that, where it's any permitted use by this bylaw shall be the 85th percentile peak parking rate set forth in the most recent edition of the ITE Parking Generation Manual for that land use. And.
I'm calling up Maggie's email on my computer.
And we don't currently, we don't currently have the 85th percentile peak, right?
No, I've got.
That's correct.
Right, so that's, which is, which is one reason why I specifically am interested in having our traffic engineer or engineering department, just to validate, should it be 90%? Should it be 82%? I just, they're the experts, which is a little different than the building commissioner.
You should verify that, but I will tell you, the industry standard is to use the 85th.
I've seen her work before.
Where is the lying word?